I'm going to follow up where the regular commissioners meeting for March 12th, 2024.
Okay, I'm going to move to adopt the agenda as presented with the exception of removing item five A. Replace it, replacing it with accepting and filing letter support from Hancock County Police Chiefs supporting the VA investigation.
Second motion, others in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Do we have any public comment? You're in on.
Our votes have approved the minutes of the February 20th special meeting as presented. Is it a motion?
Others in favor?
Aye. I'm going to move to accept a letter of support from Hancock County Police Chiefs in support of the VA investigative position as presented.
Second motion, discussion, others in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You had discuss, no.
Discussion on that?
Yeah.
Oh, no, 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 I'm sorry, I didn't know it was going to be on there, but I, I don't.
The only question I have is, I didn't get the memo that's green shirt day, so Paul and I apparently didn't get the memo that's green shirt day, so. That my speaker from Paul and I.
Yeah, I didn't notice, huh?
Yeah. Well, you're not a trained observer, Paul.
Me, approve Jake Bay's, uh, deputy?
Some vote, second motion, others in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. You have in front of you, hopefully, the approval of six-month law enforcement contract with Tremont. We had to adjust the hourly rate, and it's six months because they have received, I guess, it's not quotes, it, it is proposals from Bar Harbor and Southwest Harbor. You know, the same issue comes up again as far as response time, and two proposals that they have are for 24 hours. The proposal from Bar Harbor was in excess of $700,000, the proposal from Southwest Harbor was in sex, in excess of $300,000. And ours is $82 an hour, if we can get all the 45 hours, so it's like 200, roughly over 200,000. So, we, Lieutenant Archer and I went to the selectmen's meeting last night, and they discussed this and what their decision was that they thought that the, the quote from Bar Harbor was much too high for the town to accept, you know, a $700,000 dollar increase, which I guess I understand. So they're going to go to town meeting and have two debated between Southwest Harbor and us, and other people decide, so that's.
The town meeting is when?
May, I don't have the exact date, it's Saturday, not Tuesday.
I think they said May 14th.
Was it?
Yeah.
Was it? Yeah.
So I'm going to move to approve the six-month law enforcement contract with town of Tremont as presented.
I'm sorry, if you take the six-month out of there, because this contrast from February, if you just, as, as presented, this, this is not a six-month contract.
Yeah, it's February, I apologize, it's from February. We had an original six-month one, but this one is started in February.
Just make this precise, okay?
Oh, okay, so instead of saying six months, as presented, because this says February 20th through June 30th.
Correct, is your point.
Yes, okay, so, I'm going to say to approve the law enforcement contract with town of Tremont as presented.
Second motion. Others in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. The next two items, my dependents have been working on those, and I'll let them answer any questions that may come up, but then we'll have the discussion.
I have a paper that I wrote up here, I'll provide to you guys as well, to have some numbers to what I'm going to be speaking about. So, next item on the agenda is the residency requirement policy. Wanted to take a few minutes to speak with you guys regarding that topic. It's a topic that's been discussed overall several times in recent months as far as staffing goes. Staffing with respect to fill in vacancies has been an issue since I began working at the sheriff's office nearly six years ago. Since that time, I can count on one hand how many months the sheriff's office has been at full staff. There are factors that contribute to this statistic, whether it be pay, benefits, schedule, residency requirements, to name a few. While Hancock County, under the current commissioners, we have worked to improve those factors that I've mentioned. Residency requirements is being discussed for you today. Unlike past times, the days of receiving 20, 30, or even 40 applicants, very single positions behind us. Law enforcement agencies on the local county, state level have provided increased training, specialty opportunities, open contracts, and increased pay outside of standard contract negotiations, implemented creative schedules to improve quality of life, and relaxed residency requirements, all to retain current employees and to attract new hires. In addition to the points mentioned, the Hancock County Sheriff's Office is what I would describe as being in a unique position. Reasoning for that is unlike our neighboring county, Knott's Goff, for example, we do not have the luxury of having the same population or several police agencies with a couple hundred certified law enforcement officers to attract or pull for employment. With that being said, this is where residency requirements directly affect our ability to attract new applicants. With a 15-mile residency requirement or variance, this would allow us to dip our net into a pool of law enforcement officers that reside in Knott's Goff County, Waldo County, and Washington County. The ability to open our reach to a significant amount of certified experienced law enforcement officers could be a great benefit to Hancock County. Recently, we've received applications from four open or fully certified law enforcement officers. Out of those four certified officers, three of them reside in Knott's Goff County. Traditionally, the main state police will also, or who have always required applicants to relocate due to the agency's geographic needs as relaxed their requirements and openly advertises that there is no longer requirement to relocate. The same troopers are being requested to work all over the state. Most recently, there was a trooper even in the fleet that resides in Biscataquist County that was providing police coverage to slot three, covering anywhere from Hancock down to Colesboro, I wonder if not. Below, I have also included a list of the other 16 sheriff's offices throughout the state and their residency requirements or variances. To go down through them, Andrew Scoggan has two deputies that live approximately 10 miles outside of the county. They handle theirs on a case-by-case basis. Arustic requires deputies to live in or near their patrol zone. For obvious reasons, the northern patrol zones, they don't have their deputies living in Canada, but the southern patrol zones, they do allow their deputies to reside in Washington, Knott's Goff County. Cumberland County requires deputies to reside within 15 miles of the county line and also to reside in the state of Maine. I do not collect information from Franklin or Kennebette County. Knox County has no residency restriction, and they are allowed to live outside of the county. The distance from that county line is evaluated on a case-by-case basis. Lincoln County requires deputies to live within 30 minutes of a county line. Chair Brackett for Lincoln County has also stated that they have even softened this requirement to add instead of flexibility for new hires. Oxford, I did not collect any information from. Knott's Goff is evaluated on a case-by-case basis. Apparently, they have a deputy residing in, in Biscataquist County. Biscataquist County is the only one that I was able to collect information that still requires deputies to reside within that county. Sagatoh requires deputies to reside within 10 miles of the county line within six months of their employment. Somerset, not collecting the information. Waldo, they used to require deputies to reside within five miles of county lines, similar to what we do now. This has since been extended and does not have a set distance along with that. They currently have a deputy residing 16 miles outside of a county line. Washington is evaluated on a case-by-case basis and currently has a deputy residing 10 miles outside of a county line. And York is allowed to out, live outside of the county, no set distance, but it is evaluated on a case-by-case basis. However, they do currently have a deputy residing out of state. With that being said, I hope that I've established the trend that these other agencies have geared towards in all intent for recruitment and hires into retaining people. It seems to be the time that our law enforcement is transferring to or focusing on is that retention of new hires in a time that everybody's struggling for staffing. As we've discussed in previous meetings, there is obvious benefits both on overtime expenses, staffing needs, and training costs over hiring somebody that is certified or even having the applicants to fill those vacancies rather than over timing those shifts. In addition to that, I would encourage, the way that I looked at this, and how I would encourage you guys to look at this, is choose a center point when looking at geographic needs. One center point that I chose was the sheriff's office and elsewhere. How long would it take a deputy to respond there based on where they're located geographically? And given these examples, I have chosen the sheriff's offices as that center point. I have used rough locations, not to give out people's current addresses, but of current, past, and potential employees. The top four that you'll see listed there are within the county, the bottom three are outside of the county. We'll use Silver Lake and Bucksport, for example, if a deputy were to live there, it's a 26 commune to the office, 26-minute commune. The Airline School in Aurora would be 33-minute commune. Coastal Road in Brooksville, 37-minute commune. Seawall Road in Southwest Harbor, 33-minute commune. Now, if we look in Holden, that's a 27 commune. Bangor would be a 33-minute commune. Standard Drive in Orienton would be a 38-minute commune. The reason why I bring this to your attention is because whether somebody lives outside of the county or inside of the county, if you take that context of those specific words out of it, when it comes to response time, which will always be a point of contention when a topic like this is raised, your response time for somebody that lives in Holden or Orienton, for example, is going to be a greater benefit to the county than somebody that lives on Airline Road in, we'll say Aurora. The reasoning being is that person that lives on Airline Road in Aurora is going to be most convenient to respond to slot three, yes. However, that person that could live in Orienton, Holden, et cetera, they're going to be able to respond to slot three and go out Route nine by means of Route 46, they can come up slot two in the middle of the county by means of Route 1N. They can go up to slot one down towards Blue Hill by means of Route 15 or a KDA highway. So, just because somebody may live outside of the county doesn't mean that they would necessarily have a longer response time. In those instances, they would be, have a much shorter response time to most parts of the county in comparison to somebody that would live or reside within the county. So with those points in mind, that's what I wanted to speak with you guys this morning, except regarding residency requirements and the benefit that this could serve the Hancock County Sheriff's Office and the people of Hancock County as far as law enforcement services and response times go and the handling of that.
I'm ready to, I'm going to move to approve the deputy residency requirement policy as presented in the draft presented in the meeting packet. So that's the draft that came along with the meeting packet.
Second motion, let's have some discussion, so you have alternative? Yeah, I'm not opposed to 15, I agree with Dakota that it got to be flexible with this. But, the problem I have with the requirement is, there's a couple I have with this. First of all, anytime I see a policy where, if you look at, only number four, number four, it talks about failure to comply, deemed that the officer has resigned. I've never seen that affect this, but I've never seen it work. And, for example, if we have a deputy that lived outside the county, outside the 15 mile, whatever, and didn't relocate within a year, you cannot deem that guy retiring. If he says, "I'm not retiring," then you only have one choice, you got to terminate him. And, I, I don't see a time where we're desperate for deputies, that we would terminate any fully trained, academy-trained deputy. That's not going to happen. But, here's the problem here, is that we'll simply hire the deputy that lived in Dover, Fargo, and we hired him with the expectation that within a year he's going to relocate. Unbeknownst to the sheriff, he's been talking to the chief in Dover, who worked for Dover PD, and she says, "I can't afford the $47,000 it's gone cost because you just sent the academy." And so they realize that if we fire that deputy, they don't have to pay. We only get paid if the deputy resigns and goes to work for another agency, but if we fire that deputy, we don't get that money. Worst-case scenario is, is that that deputy simply goes to work for Dover, and they get him for nothing, and we lose the deputy that we paid to send to the academy. So, firing really isn't a viable option for us under any circumstances. And so, I'm just.
We had, sorry, we had that, when I had the opportunity to hire someone that had resigned from another department, and it was less than five years, and I thought the same thing you did, that we didn't have to pay them. So to make sure that before we hired him, we weren't going to be on the hook for money, I called the academy at the time, talked to Director Dischardens, and he said, "No." That even though that person is not in law enforcement, that five-year window is still in effect. So, if that person did come, and they wanted to hire him in Dover, they would have to come up with the money.
Have they changed?
They.
I don't know, all I know is what they've been.
They have, I believe it, it went into effect approximately five or six years ago, that if a, if an officer is terminated that, in another agency employs that officer, they still had to pay the bio, because it did used to be that way, you are correct in that. But that has since changed, is my understanding.
Okay.
So, so, what number four says, just so I fully understand, it says a full-time sworn law enforcement officer, excuse me, full-time sworn law enforcement members failing to comply with the residency requirement will be deemed to have resigned from their position with Hancock County. So they don't have to resign, they're deemed to have resigned, and you're saying that we can do that.
I'm saying that this has been challenged in the past, and the biggest problem for us is, is that unemployment office says you can't get a retired resignation, you can't force a resignation from a deputy, from an employee and call it a resignation. So forced resignation is a termination. So we're on the hook for unemployment, for terminating this guy, it doesn't work. Of course, if you look, we pay $100, $120 for a termination. So this is a sticky wickie we want to get away from. But back to the basics, we're not going to want to fire anybody. We don't want to fire anybody, we want everybody we have to handle on the rolls. Now, what I'm proposing is, is that we set up a 15-mile residency requirement, but we also encourage deputies to live within the county. But if you don't live within the county, and you live within 15 miles or less, then you're going to have to compensate the county from your pay a certain amount for the travel that we are providing you, the vehicle and the gas, and the fact that you may get an advantage to not being called out because of where you live. And so I'm proposing that for every five miles, there is a rate of, of pay that you, of forfeiture that you have to give, up to 15 miles. Additionally, I'm suggesting that if we hire somebody who lives more than 15 miles from the county, that person cannot start work and start being compensated until they have secured housing within the county. And that way, we don't have this waiting a year and then not, and then having to fire them because they didn't meet the requirement. So, my policy agrees with the 15 miles. It's just that instead of terminating anybody for violating this or whatnot, you simply pay for the luxury of living outside the county. That's where you will live, but, and.
You mean outside the 15 miles?
Outside of 15, no. You're, you're going to pay for living 1 to 15 miles outside the county, if that's where you prefer to live. But you're going to have to pay extra for that.
But how is that in the interest of retaining and getting new hires? Like, people aren't going to want to come to work, there's a housing crisis, which I can attest to, because my wife works for, in mortgage lending, and there is nowhere to live within this county. People cannot afford to live within this county, they can't afford to rent houses or rent, or buy houses because the housing market is such a crisis, and you're going to penalize people because they have a place to live, because your, your verbiage includes current employees of Hancock County that live without, outside the county. So it includes everyone, so now we're going to not only potentially lose new hires, but we're going to potentially lose people that are already working here because they don't want to lose money. You're talking about like $12,000 to $18,000 a year. Like, why would people want to stay?
So what I would propose is a workaround to, for, as you have outlined as being an issue. I think I would, I would propose, propose that we don't, we are only allowed to hire applicants within that 15 miles to eliminate the issue of hiring somebody outside of the 15 miles and then requiring them to move within a year through the termination, and that being an issue, is just to do a set 15 miles, it has, they have to reside within that at the time of appointment, rather than have that to a year period or such.
Well, that's a management issue, and going to have, you're talking about not only letting them live outside the county, but letting them have the, the advantage of not getting called out?
So.
If you have a call, if you have slot three, and you live in Condesca within 15 miles, and you get a call about 911 hangup, who do you think is going to get to call you, or somebody else in that section? I'm not going to call the guy from Condesca.
But that's something for the sheriff's office to worry about.
I'm just saying, okay, I'm just talking about, we're about the guys in the other, the rest of the section. So that's, that's an issue you guys will deal with if you want.
I mean, I think in the interest of, of hiring new people and, and retaining the people that we have, I think that getting rid of that verbiage is going to be a huge benefit to, not, not just the sheriff's office, but the county in general. I mean, we're looking at good, qualified applicants that are coming in, like you said, live outside of the county. What, what person is going to want to, I mean, they're not going to be able to find housing in six months, I can almost guarantee you that. And what person is going to want to pay monetary penalty out of their paycheck to come work somewhere? Like, that's just not, it's not feasible, especially when.
Well, if they can't find it in six months, how can you find it?
Mr. Clark, I, I can tell you right now, there's not a lot of places to buy or rent.
This proposal says that within a year you're going to relocate. If you can't find it in six months, how are you going to find it?
But what I'm saying is that also includes, it says incumbents in there, which are current employees of the sheriff's office.
Which ones is included?
The one that you proposed in the email a few days ago.
So, well, this policy said new incumbent members, the, the, the.
So, all right, so now we want to, what, what we want to penalize, how many, how many people do we have living outside the county that work for the county now, and then what, three or four of them? So, we're going to potentially lose those people, I mean, someone living in Knott's Goff County, wouldn't be hard for them to get a job at Knott's Goff.
If we're talking about management, what are you going to do with a guy that lives in Radley, which is 35 to 40 miles away? If we don't, either one of these policies.
So what I would say to that is, you know, I, I mean, I'll come out and say, this, this policy affects me highly. I resign from Hancock County. And in working the road, I, I can tell you that there are many instances, being, like I said, there are their advantages geographically. Looking at it on a map, take the county out of it, where I would be asked to respond to a call, and I would get there far sooner than where other people, or how far sooner than other people that did reside within the county. If you, if you take the county lines out of it and say, geographically, does this make sense for the citizens of Hancock County? I think it does, response times included. And to penalize people for monetarily, for how far they live outside of the county, you, you will not attract people here. Our pay right now is comparable to other agencies. We have been fortunate recently with our applications to attract certified officers and not have to go and have that waiting period, fill those overtime shifts, all that, and we will lose that ability. As I've outlined, three out of the four of our applicants have been from Knott's Goff County.
Hold up, excuse me, so in your presentation, you talked about the difference between Main Street and Bangor and whatever. But, problem is, is that very seldom do you respond to the office. If you live in Brooksville, maybe, they take 26 minutes to get to the office, but your call isn't about the office, your call is in, in slot three. Am I getting the numbers right?
That would be even further away.
No, no, it's, it's three, it's Stoneton.
That would be slot one.
One, okay, I'm getting them. So if you're living in Brooksville and your call is in slot one, it's going to be a lot closer than 26 miles to your call. But if you're, calls in slot one and you live in Main Street and Bangor, you're going to be a long ways from that call. So, that, you know, this, this comes with the particular situation.
Big, I, in that respect, I will say, I understand that argument. Clearly, if somebody lived in Brooksville, they're going to have a sooner response time in Stoneton than somebody in Bangor. However, with that being said, that person in Bangor will also have a much quicker response time to somewhere in slot three or slot two than that person in Brooksville would. So, in whichever way you want to cut it or, or look at it, I mean, you can always say, yeah, that person living within the county will have a closer response time to the immediate area they reside in. However, as a greater benefit to the county as a whole, that person in Holden, Orienton, Bangor would be, or serve a greater purpose and have a better response time than somebody that lives in Brooksville.
And as you said, it's, it's depends on how you say it, with who you say it, so, just a second, Chair.
So, what's on the floor is, is, is the original policy, which doesn't have all that other stuff. I, I, I find the draft one, not what's on the floor, or Commissioner Clark's, to be a little, you know, a lot to manage. I don't have trouble with somebody living 50 miles away. I think, I, I just find it a lot to manage, so, just mind it, everybody, what's on the floor is, it does not include that Commissioner Clark's language.
Sheriff, what were you going to say?
Can, can I interject before you do, just real quick? Just the frame of conversation, too. I mean, this came up in August last year, so, then the chief and I kept going back with Sheriff, so I kept going back and forth, and, and so I put something on paper, looking at, talking with other agencies and so on for, to get the discussion going. So I, I mean, I'm not recommending you adopt that, it's to hear back from the commissioners what you want, and I had sent it back to the sheriff's office, and, and obviously now they're presenting you with additional insight as well. So, it seems like there could perhaps be a compromise somewhere in between, somewhere there, but, I mean, there's a lot of different aspects, I guess, that still have to be hammered out, it sounds like.
What, well, I, I, this, I recall that discussion, and we discussed 15 miles, and I, I don't have a problem with four because it's a, it's a condition of employment, and that's, you know, that happens in contractual employment situations all the time, so I don't have a problem. So I'm fine with this, and the reason I made this, this motion is, it's consistent with our prior discussion. I think it, it hits all the points that, for me, need to be addressed, and, you know, if we run across something, then we deal with it, then.
And that's the problem I have with this, is that setting ourselves up to deal with a situation we don't want to have to deal with.
In respect to that, Commissioner Clark, I, I appreciate your, your stance. I, I would just encourage you guys to look at what the other counties, and the, the counties throughout the state trend towards, and it is all what is being proposed.
So, Dakota, I withdraw my pushover charging, I withdraw that. I still think it's important that we adopt policy where you simply do not hire or employ somebody until they have established residency, if they live more than 15 miles outside the county.
I, I don't think that you would find an argument on our part for any reason. We would like to see that 15 miles, if the, it could be agreed that the, the charging monetary amounts could be dropped. I think we are in agreeance that if you allowed us or agreed for that 15 miles, that, that, that is what we're looking for. So, I don't think we have an issue with that.
And so, you wouldn't be opposed to policy where you can hire somebody for calls if you want, but when he doesn't start working, you compensate until he establishes housing within the county.
Within 15 miles is what we propose.
Yeah, okay, here's the problem, let me just give you the worst, you know, every time I developed a policy, I had to look at it and say, "How can this be abused, right?" So, excuse me, I'm not trying to talk this down, I'm just trying to be the devil's advocate, but, you got a guy in Dover, which is more than 15 miles away. And you tell him, "Okay, I'm going to give you a job, but you've got to establish residency, housing within 15 months." The guy says, "Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna rid up." The guy says, okay, I'm gonna I'm gonna I'm gonna rent a bedroom for my brother-in-law in Condesca. Yeah, right. He gets to Condesca with a cruiser and keeps running on going. Now, what are you going to do? Bed checks for crying out loud? Come on. So my problem is is that you can, we can have this and it seem reasonable if a guy in Holden couldn't establish fifteen mile residency. But then you start giving fifteen mile residency, a guy that lives seventeen miles away. And now we get, oh, jeez, he's close enough. So anyways, I don't know what to tell you, Dakota. I, you know, I it sounds on one end, it sounds fair, everybody get to fifteen miles, but can't you see how it could be abused if you had the wrong had an applicant living in a particular area and so.
I think to talk on that point, Commissioner Clark, you know, the the scenario that you you keep referencing with somebody living in Dover and having to obtain that residency within that one year and how that's concerned. You know, I I don't think that we would have an issue as a sheriff's office with four going, number four, in employing, not employing somebody unless they live within that fifteen miles. We're not trying to circumvent or have, you know, have an issue. I know that we have had, um, I was the first one in recent years to reside outside the county. I know that we've had additional sense. And we have not had an issue for response times. We have not had an issue or complaints regarding that. Um, and it's it's flowed, you know, seemingly without any issue.
I I was just going to say, would it satisfy what you're talking about, Commissioner, is we incorporate where are you going to live into our background check? And then we can say, I'm going to live on Fifth Street and Bangor. Okay. It's our responsibility to go say, have you established that? Have you changed your address on your driver's license, your registrations and those things? Make that as part of our
It's 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 really, you know, problem.
Oh, I know.
And you can choose to ignore it or you can press it. So Paul, I suggested that we make one simple change, and that is is that we don't start and commence uh work and compensation of somebody that lives more than fifteen miles outside the county until they have established residency within at least fifteen months.
I think that's agreeable. I think that's what we were proposing from the initial onset.
So here's here's what I don't like. Is a young man from Karustak is not, wants to come here. And he's going to do exactly what he's what Commissioner Clark has outlined. He's going to get a bedroom in somebody's house to see if he likes it. And if it works out, then he's gonna have to move here. So I I I understand the quandary, but I I I just don't think it's an issue. That's why I moved this. This seemed reasonable to me. You're you're trying to attract, you know, folks that, you know, maybe out of the military and, you know, I don't know, I I I I I don't have a problem with this. Would I have a problem with changing? No, but I don't have a problem with this one.
All right, so we've got a motion on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Sorry, aye. All right, no, I'm gonna sit down, do your, do your motion.
Okay, yes.
So do you have this on the screen? I'm going to review quickly. So how about we direct staff to? No, I think we can fix it right now with a simple word change. So in my proposal, I say swarm personnel who at the time of hire live more than fifteen miles from the Hancock County border shall not commit to work or be compensated until they have established housing within Hancock County, period. Uh Hancock County under the resident requirement policy, which means they can come within fifteen miles. Guys, okay?
Yes, as long as I understand it correctly. So if they're within that fifteen mile border and they have established that, then we'll make that part of our background check.
You don't know how to deal with that yourself.
Oh, I get it, yeah.
A guy from Holden is going to have to get some kind of housing.
That's right.
I mean, he he has no choice.
Yep.
It's the guy that lives seventeen, nineteen, thirty five miles outside. That's that's going to be the problem. That's your problem.
Yep.
Happy heavy policy in place that says you've got to live within fifteen miles. You know, at least be housed within fifteen miles during your shift. And that's the other problem too, is that the guy says, okay, I get an apartment in Holden. And, okay, fine, but at the end of your shift, the cruiser stays here. It doesn't go back to Holden. And you've got a cruiser sitting there for five days and unattended. I would be a little concerned about that, but that's your issue.
Yeah, you know.
So my my motion is is that we alter the suggested draft to simply add what I just said, that that first, most of that that paragraph excluding and she'll not be eligible for the fifteen mile outside fifteen mile. I do wish that we could add that last paragraph, which simply says that at the time of us approving employment, you will tell us where the guy lives.
We'll show you proof.
Right, so at the time of the hire of the applicant, Hancock County, who must employ who lives outside the county, the sheriff's management staff will inform the county commissioners of the residency of the applicant and donate the actual travel distance for the residents to the closest county. I would like to add that to the policy.
If you're all willing to work with us, to get where we feel we need to be, we're willing to have those jobs.
All right.
We'll do it.
Well, maybe maybe Michael, rather than a motion that you take the suggestions, put it together, bring it back to us next week.
Okay, so I think so you want to first that basically the plus, third paragraph, most of it except for the exclusion of the
Yeah, everything from and she'll know that. I'll take that out and then all of the last paragraph.
All of them, okay.
All right.
Is there a motion that says that or just what we're doing?
I think I think by general consensus, that coming back, it's going to be
And to approve the five product.
Well, that is not the draft that still contains the verbiage in regards to the monetary compensation.
I think what
No, no, I'm not using either out of mine. I'm using all of yours. I'm just changing.
Well, you just might have that other one up on the screen.
Should we, was the intent to remove number four, though, and replace it with what you just instructed? So I'm clear that I, yeah, I thought you wanted to get rid of that.
Four will leave and be replaced by the next to the last and last paragraph, the line excluding it.
Thank you for your time. Thank you, gentlemen, for working with us. We appreciate it. Uh, see as approval for opera funds, and I think Michael and Kitty have been doing some research on it. This is in regards to a situation where we have a deputy that lives, actually lives here on State Street, so couldn't live a heck of a lot closer and works for another agency, but we we'd have to get into the file. I have twenty four thousand two hundred and fifty dollars between a reserve account and ten thousand dollars in the budget. I should have sent those to those figures. So what I'm looking for is twenty two thousand seven hundred and seventy five dollars. If you approve opera funds, that that's that's there, but I also put in a couple other suggestions if opera funds either doesn't apply or you don't approve it. There's two reserve accounts. One of them is a radio account that we currently have and that has forty thousand dollars in it and we have brand new radios. So that's something that we could replenish later down the road. And the other one is the drug task force has forty six thousand something in it. Take some money out. So what I'm just asking is that twenty two thousand seven hundred and seventy five dollars needed for the buyout come from some source.
I'm not sure why we're even voting on anything. Last meeting, we asked you to talk to Kitty or whoever, determine whether or not we could use opera funds to pay my out. I understand the answer is yes. Is that correct?
Well, yes and no.
That's my
So so that's the next part. I mean, if you indulge me for a second, I can explain you. But essentially, Kitty found three different places where uh opera funds could utilize under the final rule. And and the first one was dealing with funding public safety, public health, and the HR staff who directly responded to COVID. Obviously, we've gone past that.
That's the easy one.
Uh, the second one is
I'm sorry, but that one does not apply now?
Well, I mean,
Because we're not in this.
We're not in this COVID.
So that doesn't apply.
So it really does. So the second one is rehiring and staffing up public sector staff. And before I go back to that one, the third one is retaining existing staff, close raises and worker worker retention incentives. Obviously, that's not what we're trying to, you're being asked to try to accomplish or or make available. So that really represents item number two, which is rehiring and staffing up. As she indicated, there's basically uh some criteria there that you use as a calculation. So they have to, they would be allowed to cities to hire up to an additional seven and a half percent of the city pre-pandemic staffing levels. To do that, you have to use the calculation. The calculation is to calculate the pre-pandemic level, which was as the FTE full-time equivalent size of January twenty seventh, twenty twenty. And that can include filled and unfilled position, just the equivalent of what was budgeted. Then you calculate the adjusted pre-pandemic baseline and using that, you cities would then multiply that number time one point zero seven five. And that comes up with where you're at right now for what that would be. And then you calculate the actual number of full full-time equivalents. All right, so basically, you have the two thousand twenty by two thousand twenty one. You would calculate an additional one point seven five. That gives you that number. And you see where you go from there.
Okay.
The issue that we have, just, I mean, not issue, but
I can I just interrupt for a second? Does the math work?
Well, this is what I'm going to get.
Okay.
Patience.
Well, that's what I want to hear.
But so the issue is, is basically in two thousand twenty and and Monica did calculations separate from mine, and then we both got back together and confirmed. It's because I did mine, she did hers, and then we got together. So the number of employees in the two thousand twenty budget, and we just took department ten, assuming that that is what we're actually talking about for like for like. There were fifteen employees. Number of filled at the time was fourteen. The budgeted full-time was eight hundred and seventy thousand. Multiply the budget amount, that's an additional sixty five thousand two seventy two eighty or a total dollar. Um, and two of nine hundred and thirty five thousand five seventy six eighty. In two thousand twenty one, the number of employees in department ten was fifteen. The number filled was fifteen. So taking that number, the one point seven five and two, that would give you essentially the equivalent of another, almost one additional position is what it amounts to. In two thousand twenty two, the number of employees were sixteen, so really not purposeful. But really, at that time, the employee or we had geared up as a county for whatever reason. And I know there's other reasons that the sheriff could speak to, but the reality is then looking beyond, which isn't part of the equation, but looking at twenty twenty three and twenty twenty four, twenty twenty three, there's essentially seventeen and a half positions, basically, but and and eighteen and a half positions, again, using the calculation of the one point seven five based on what you would have had. And we still had those employees. So basically, we gradually built up anyway, long and short of it, is that at best, you probably could have got one additional position, maybe sixty five thousand plus or minus. And really, you added that unless you want to say, well, we technically didn't add it for that specific purpose, so we're going to go ahead and spend opera funds. And then we have to put it down as such, and I guess you'd have to, we'd have to somehow justify.
So the only way we really could qualify this is that you'd have to have fewer employees in twenty twenty.
At the time, yes.
So the math does not work.
And the math really doesn't. I mean, we have more now than we did at the beginning of this.
So you had three scenarios and none of them worked.
For opera, yeah. I mean, that's what I would argue, especially being conservative, but that's why we
I was hopeful the math was going to work. I mean, because you would think pre-COVID, right?
All right, so the answer to our question last week is is that, well, under three scenarios that we looked at, none of them worked. So
And part part B of that was also to come back with any other means. So it wasn't just opera, it was that and anything else.
That is something we consider every time we hear a request to hire. And my suggestion is is that we don't have anything to add. We don't have anyone today to hire. There's been no request today. So I'm saying, if you have a position you want to hire, you should come back at a future meeting with the name, the information on the guy, where he lives, how many miles he lives from the line.
I'll walk you up the street.
I'm just
Right, I get it.
But anyways, and at that point, a package on how you want to pay all costs of hiring.
Because because it sounds like opera is not not, which is too bad.
What a shame. I mean, all this, all this money and strings are still holding us up.
So is it, do I have your permission to give this person a provisional offer?
I don't understand that. I don't understand how that works because you have an applicant, okay. You wanted to work for us? You checked out? Good. I'm going to go to the commissioners and ask them to hire you at this rate of pay, provided they pay for, in this case, your schooling and so on.
Yep.
And if they agree to that, I'm going to come back and and make that offer to you. I mean, it's not, it's not like he's not hasn't applied and you need this condition to get him to apply. If he's applied and he's an applicant, treat him like all applicants. Simply tell us that you want to hire this guy and we'll tell you how much of that we could pay for.
We do, and and part of that is um the conditional offer we give them so that they sign the release so we can do a more in-depth back.
I I guess I don't understand that concept. That's something I, we'll we'll deal with that. So so come back at a future meeting with a request to hire with all the details that we always ask for. With the funding package, it was go from there. That's the only agenda for the day.
Okay, so just, I realize that, but just so, I have this in front of me. He's short twenty two seven seventy five, right? Or you remember? We can't use opera. But there is
There's two reserve accounts there that I highlighted.
Yeah, which is drug task force and and the radios.
If I were going to prioritize those, Commissioner, I would say the radios because you used the opera funds and bought radios for us two years ago.
Yeah, and 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 probably we should set up a CIP moving forward so that you know, we're not faced with the same thing, we don't have opera.
We do have, we have a reserve account, just four lions.
No, 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 I I realize that. It's not enough money in it, so he's going to have to
We've been having, we've been having money every year.
Yeah.
And
We'll start again.
He's hoping that we're building it up, passing out the funds. Need it, we can tap back in. That's not the worst.
Yeah, I will. I will.
I do request to hide and give that information to you.
I mean, to me, it sounds like it's possible. It's just words.
Yep. Informal presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else? Oh, a couple of things, gentlemen. I I guess I went over the the three month thing. We were given, I know that word doesn't come very often, from the state, DOT, a drone. And the drone, the reason they have given these to certain departments is because of the numerous complaints that DOT has reserved. It has a series of accidents shutting down roadways um to reconstruct an accident, you know, take one A. So, you know, you shut down one A and it's a mess. If you shut down something down by head of the island, that's a mess. So they have taken this to hide and they have bought uh and given to departments drones. Uh, Elsuk got one and Elsuk picked ours up, and we now have it. So we're going to need to get, uh, the incoming chief is a drone pilot. You have to be, you have to register this with the FAA and do all those kinds of things. But we do have that and it's going to be great addition uh to us as far as accident reconstruction, uh, searches and all those types of things. So I just want to make you aware that we do currently have it. And I will be notifying Malcolm. Uh, I was advised to let our risk pool know because they had like thirty five thousand dollar device and how much was the software that's coming with it, guys?
Fifteen thousand dollars.
Yeah, which comes with it. So we're talking fifty thousand dollars or more that was given to us, so.
Well, it's important that that is on minutes. Because you guys know the public perception on some people for drones.
Yep.
So you'll take notes. So I think it's important you don't even be sliding this thunder right now.
And I'll I'll have a policy for you to look at as well.
The policy is part of your policy procedures, isn't it? I mean, that's part of
I don't think we have it. We don't have it for drones.
We've never had a drone, so we don't think that's
It was a certification policy procedures, so if you still do your certification planning, it's part of that policy in there.
If if you have it at the time, for example, like a tactical team, there are certain requirements for tactical team. We don't have it, so it doesn't apply to us. We will have a policy. Okay, thank you, gentlemen. I just want to make sure that I didn't forget it, you know about it.
Thank you.
So are you adding to your report? Okay, so I'm gonna move to approve and file a mission broadband report as presented.
Second to motion.
I didn't see this stuff on.
I'll listen favor.
Aye.
Aye. I didn't mean to step on you.
That was good. You got it. Obviously, what you have in front of you is a mountain desert proposal that had a piece of it that was not part of, not part of the project, should, should not have been the first time. White Collin does have that. I should have asked him one question, which was, I think, what if you ask this, the two projects? It definitely is, so the project itself is the twenty-seven locations to be served by spectrum. Uh, the request is the same.
So to me, a plan forward would be A to rescind what we did on February sixth and then B to have a, a motion. And so that's what I'm prepared to do. I'm gonna move to rescind the action taken on February sixth, twenty twenty-four to fund the Mount Desert broadband project in the amount of a hundred and forty thousand, eight hundred and thirty-four dollars.
Second motion. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Alright.
Aye. I'm gonna move to approve funding Mount Desert broadband build out by spectrum in the amount of a hundred and forty, uh, a hundred and forty, eight hundred and thirty-four dollars, a hundred and forty thousand, eight hundred and thirty-four dollars to be paid from Hancock County ARPA funds. Uh, contingent on the approval of town Mount Desert funding a hundred and thirty-one thousand of the project, which is scheduled for a town council meeting, March eighteenth, twenty twenty-four.
Second motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Alright.
Aye. And I left ARPA out of the town of Mount Desert because quite frankly, how they funded it's their.
Yeah, that's right. So just for clarification, is that a town meeting or a town council? So is the council gonna be the actual, or is it the actual town meeting?
Uh, for, for, I thought I think.
Not while, for, for Mount, for Mount Desert. I don't know either way, cause you had mentioned town council, so I just didn't want anybody to come up with a.
Uh, I did mention town council and I left ARPA out. And the reason is that I'm pretty sure the council, and actually, there's select work for the council, if I'm not mistaken, but I think they have the, I think they have the.
Once authorized by the town meeting. I would say.
Okay, how about I say this?
Just, just tell an approval, take the council.
Uh, which is.
I just wanna, just don't wanna attack.
Contingent on the approval of town Mount Desert funding a hundred and thirty-one thousand of this project, period.
And I'll second that motion.
Did we vote on the other one?
Yeah.
We did, okay. So, uh, I'm gonna move to reconsider it. So that needs to be seconded.
Seconded.
And then we can vote on it. Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so I'd like to amend the motion to read. Move to approve funding Mount Desert broadband build out by spectrum in the amount of a hundred and forty thousand, eight hundred and thirty-four dollars to be paid from Hancock County ARPA funds contingent on the approval of the town of Mount Desert funding a hundred and thirty-one thousand of the project.
And I'll second the motion.
That way, there's no timeframe. They need to go with the town meeting, they can, the council, if the select board can do it, they can.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 This is, I don't get some technicality.
I know, but I was just trying to get it. Right.
That's right.
Did that do that?
Good. I mean, I, that, yeah, I think that's. Thank you, Mr. Sh. I may not see you again. I said that yourself.
Yeah, you keep saying that.
That would be a shame, JD, you know.
Have a good day. Thank you.
JD, in all seriousness, if you do know, thank you very much. You have made the difference.
Yeah, thank you.
You've done an excellent job. Enjoy working with you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
But I'm sure we'll see you.
I might just come and sit here.
Then we're gonna, then we're gonna call an ambulance or something.
Yeah.
Got the white coat for you.
Kenny. Speaking of people, we always like to see it. We can see it for a long time.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
Okay. Yes, here I am. Um, so the request from Michael was for me to sort of dig in to the request that you were given a kickback in February from the Coalition Council for organizations, cultural organizations and nonprofits throughout the county. And the request was, could ARPA funds be utilized for capital projects? And it took some digging, but I finally found that, that sentence in there that says assistance to nonprofit organizations, including program services or capital expenditures, including loans or grants to mitigate financial hardships such as declines in revenues, increased costs, that helps us. Um, so it is there actually in the writing. There is a lot of nationwide support for supporting nonprofits. The easy thing that they like to do is to support programming, right? So that's an easy, but the capital expenditure is in there as, as listed in, as requested from them.
Okay, so to me, that opens up a whole host of things. And this is what I, you know, we have requests after requests after requests for funds. I, you know, two million here, three hundred thousand here, four hundred thousand here. And I, I think that, you know, with everything that's going on, people living behind walls, you know, all this opioid epidemic, what we're facing in the jail. I think that we need to start prioritizing some of those things, and we need to start with the jail. Because, uh, you know, I'm sorry, but funding these other organizations not helping our constituents. And our constituents are not these individual, uh, you know, nonprofits. Our constituents are the towns who are paying the bill here. Cause we're taking money from them by not putting it into county services of some sort. So I, 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 to me, I, I think we need to somehow prioritize, and I don't know how to do it, and maybe you can help us do that. Uh, we need to identify, because times are unshort, uh, you know, what can we do to address some of these problems with ARPA funds before we start giving, you know, creating grant programs and handing out money? I'm sorry, but, and, and I hear from at least two communities pretty regularly that, you know,
Based upon what your priorities are, there is a strong case that you made to support organizations that are tackling those problems.
Exactly.
Yeah.
That, a- a- and tackling those programs to the benefit of the services that, that we are compelled to offer. Jail is one of them.
Right. I, I totally agree with you, but I just wanna say that there is a lot out there that says these organizations support local economies, local economic development, that without a library, without a museum, without the grant, that that is what creates community, and so.
But that's not what I'm talking.
I know. I, I just, there is an argument to be said that by supporting them, you are supporting that. I just wanted to put that.
Yeah, no, I, I understand that, and, and that argument's valid, but, you know.
Are there more pressing?
There are more pressing issues. I mean, just go up the street, go behind some of these places and see what's going on. And, you know, take a tour of the jail. And, you know, just, those are our pressing.
The sheriff just mentioned to me on the way out about, um, him reviewing some programming for PTSD. Right? That sort of thing that is.
You know, and what, you know, maybe there are things or organizations we could be partnering that would, that would, you know, take some pressure off. I keep going back to the jail because, you know, that's to me, front and center where, where you can actually see what problems. And, you know, I don't know, we've got to start. To me, we have enough money here to, to make a difference if we make the right choices.
You have anything to say?
No. Alright. And, and, you know, I've said a lot, but, you know, how do we get there? That's it. That's the part that I don't know.
I don't think there's been any lack of, uh, support for the jail through ARPA funds. He's kind of looking at the dollar, so. And I don't shed any tear that we haven't been supporting the jail.
No.
Uh, and that we won't continue to support the jail. But, uh, I think Kitty's point is right that you can poo-poo nonprofits all you want, but the fact is, it's a big part of the community. It's the entire county. We just couldn't, uh, buy out, uh, to get a, uh, another sheriff and somehow we're gonna like fund more officers for the jail? No, we're not. We're not gonna build a new jail. We're not, I mean, I don't really know what the ARPA funds are gonna do to help the jail. It's not really something that they can be used for beyond some of the everyday expenses that happen, whether it's a new generator, yeah, we're gonna keep doing that. But I think it's short-sighted to think, uh, well, uh, some nonprofits can just fend it on their own.
I'm not poo-pooing nonprofits. I'm just making the case that I think, you know, maybe some, like Kitty outlined, some, and I'm not, I don't know, building the jail, talking about programs that, or, or, you know, and I don't know what it is.
The problem is like the programs that you're talking about, like you talk about the homeless behind war. That's exactly the nonprofits' help. So giving money to those organizations, whether it's Loews and Fishes or Home Inc., that's exactly what it's helping, and it's helping out the jail because these people aren't being thrown in jail. Uh, and they're maybe getting help and not, uh,
That's my.
Getting hooked on drugs, so.
That's my.
That is giving money to the profits and it's kind of saying grant them. Yeah, some of these are gonna be arts organizations and maybe you don't wanna support arts organizations. I do, but, uh, I just think to just be like, oh, I'm not gonna touch it.
I think unfortunately, being on the downside of this now, it's time to say, you know, if we have this much unallocated, what are those final priorities?
Yeah.
And then to figure out, how do we get there, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
How, what's, what are we supporting? And we love to support everything, but what are those priorities?
Yeah.
For this final phase?
Sure.
And the intent is come back in April and have that conversation.
Yeah.
So I mean, that's, that's what we're building up right now, and obviously you can tap in with some of the research that Kitty's recently done with all pages that you've gone through to see what else may apply. But ultimately, we are gonna come back. I don't wanna say drop in your lap. We'll give suggestions, but ultimately, Kitty, we even tracks, like you said. So we can try to finalize some stuff before the end of this year. And, uh, really, the intent was March or April, and the way things would work, I think it's gonna be that, that first, any, April, that we probably will come back to.
Yeah, no, I, and I guess my characterization of nonprofits is not proper, but I think you, you understand what I'm trying.
There's a lot of need out there, right? We've talked about housing, we've talked about homes, we've talked about opioid. So, you know, the sheriff's talking about PTSD now, so yes. Um, and, and as I said, there's a strong case to be made that to support programming that some of these nonprofits offer. It's sort of.
We can.
Right.
Alright. Thanks, Kitty. Well, well, this, this is a global issue of at what point are we going to have the kind of discussion that we need to, to nail that and what we're going to do with the rest of the ARPA funds? I mean, this is one component that you're eager about. But, uh, but honestly, I'm interested in some of our infrastructure issues. And those are not, you're not gonna buy those tomorrow. So, I mean, when do we finally have this discussion? I don't know if it's as easy as setting us up blocks for social programs, for infrastructure, for, I don't know. Yeah, we, we just kicked the can down the road the other day.
Well, I think we're at the point where we have, we essentially need to make those decisions, but we have to have the conversation. So, I mean, the perfect word, like, suggests you that you have a workshop and do it on a non-meeting day. And really sit down and do that.
I agree because.
But right now, I mean, I just, I just need to know when you wanna do that. I, we've got a running list of different things that have been suggested, discussed, needs that have been mentioned by department heads. We have another staff meeting this week, so I will bring it up again to people to obtain that information. I just know that unless it's changed, I believe only two of you can be here at the next meeting in March. So that's why I said April, because, uh, unless you do do it, I assumed all three of you wanna be here, so.
Yeah. And when you say infrastructure, you mean county infrastructure?
Well, county, county stuff like that. I'm not, I'm not talking about outside projects.
Buildings, you know.
So certainly we'll have a list, but that doesn't mean you can't come with your own or shouldn't come with your own and, and anything else that's been mentioned. Uh, I don't know that we'll have an all-exclusive. There may be a pool at the end that you kind of say, we'd like to target this, now continue to do more research. We'll have to jump on that because ideally, we have a lot of these things in motion, hopefully, before we start getting into the hardcore budget process.
We do it in the second meeting, after the second meeting. To have a workshop then. You mean at the meeting? Well, after the meeting, I think. I just don't know how we normally have done the workshop ideas.
Yeah, I think you've done it since I've been here, but I know you.
For about just a di- different day, late than.
It's, it's, it's more difficult to accommodate for that.
Well, the only reason I say that is because, you know, we don't know how the meeting goes and how it's gonna be retired. I, I, it would be nice just to focus on that and nothing else.
No, we can look under schedules and get Michael to work out a schedule. See, from my own personal standpoint, I'd rather do it on a separate day, but I gotta accommodate two guys.
I'd make the work my, John.
So, I think the other one, yeah, I'll look at my schedule and see. So you work with, uh, Michael.
And, 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 uh, when you say county infrastructure, I, that's what I've been hearing from, from communities, is that, you know, they do what you can to keep the rate down, so you're not, you know.
Well, it would be, it would be a terrible shame for us to give, you know, a bulk of this remaining ARPA funds to social services and other things here, and then come back three years later and ask for a ten-day note.
Exactly.
For an infrastructure program, we had, you know, sufficient funds to do that now, and so. And that's not unprecedented. Waldo County, I believe, did it right. They identified every town in that county, cause they only got like sixteen and seventeen compared to what we got. They, they said every town, here is a sum of money from ARPA, this is what you're going to get. Then they took the rest of it and they put it into the infrastructure program. And they built a new, uh, EMA building, they built a new EOC building, they built, uh, storage facilities, new garden facility. In other words, they did, with their ARPA funds, a lot of counties have been taxing their tax budgets for. So I'm saying that we have done broadband, we have done, has this duty pay. We had, we had done, uh,
The nonprofits.
Nonprofits. I mean, we have, we have reached out to the community in, in, in broad bands, in, in broad spectrums with our ARPA funds, and now it's time, I think, for us to give the tax break and get some of this infrastructure done so that we don't tax them in the future.
Well, and, and, and another thing that comes to mind is very early on, we discussed about, you know, just looking at coming up with some formula and distributing it to the communities for that to do. You know, that, that's not a bad idea, right? That's something we should be talking about if we get there.
See, I think it's a twin process because we already don't know. In some cases, a four million dollars, in some cases, you've got, you know, extensions, and I know you have a four million.
Yeah.
So that's why I like Waldo County, is the way they do it, because everybody's all, uh, you know, they're proportional now. And nobody can complain that they got short-sighted.
Unfortunately, this is all new territory, right? You know, trying to figure out how to do this and do it quickly and.
Well, and what is the issue, Kitty? Because, I mean, we've been kicking this can down the road, and by December of this year, we've got to, we've got some deadlines to meet.
Is it, it's, it is December.
It's gotta be obligated.
Yep. It's gotta be obligated.
And tell me exactly what that means, Kitty.
It means that you can't just say, we're gonna put five hundred thousand dollars into a new building. It's gotta be a true, bold work being done on it. You know, so it can't just be a fine sky. It's gotta be something.
So if you did an actual study and you did a, a bid and you had, that is obligated.
Absolutely.
Obligated your budget.
Out of the remaining.
Well, from, from, from the ARPA fund, obviously, you would have to.
Yeah.
You would have to have.
Yeah, you can't just do set aside or something.
To have, like, you can, you can do all that and then bid. You would have to have, like, you could do all that and then bid a construction project, and construction may not have necessarily started by January 1st, but you'll have a company that's giving you a whole list of things they're going to provide to the county and for X amount of dollars.
We can't just put money in blocks.
And here we just, here we just merge. I mean, contractors have already decided what they're going to do this summer. And here we have, we have been deciding what projects we want to fund. So I don't even know if we can get an architect to give us anything this, this late season, but. I mean, if they're not building, I'm not really not trying to make you a jerk, but, I mean, like, all we've done for the last two years is build stuff around here. What else are we going to build? Dennis, well, tell me if I'm out of line, but we have a money pit sitting right over there that needs to be addressed in that district area that's building. It's lacking space, it's, it's terribly inefficient, it's almost a dungeon. Look, it's, it's, it's all, all residents that they're intended to be in office. And we either need to relocate them, because we tried, with the course of, that's, I don't know, SESC, we still need to do something, build. There's a project. We need to find a piece of land, we need to build some storage space. We don't have a good storage space for the jail, Sheriff's Department, maintenance. I mean, we can't, we get, they get a decent Mercedes Benz up there for a car, sets up in the jail, evacuation, yeah, for three years, and by the time we get to get it from drug forfeiture, it's worthless because it's been sitting there rotting. So, we don't even have good storage space. I mean, that's another. But you're about to lose the courthouse. You have this gigantic building that all it's going to be is a bunch of storage space. If something happens with it, so I don't really understand, like, our big storage. And that's three years from now.
Well, here's the, here's the problem, John.
That, that building sets on a campus. And so, it's, it's like if we get rid of the building and sell it, we've lost the space on a campus. But you can't tear the thing down, yes, you know what I mean? There's going to be an outcry here for the community, it's like Rufus's house. So, I mean, it's, it's a sticky wiki to deal with, but I still think that there's a way to deal with it and improve the working conditions of the DA staff. And we have a perfect opportunity because we have the funding to do that, so. Do you think the DA staff would fit here? Or situation and DA staff, the building after they leave? And just. Yeah, what are you going to do with the building? I don't know. And that's my problem, sure. I mean, the sheriff has that his eye on the space up here and, that is going to be a fun discussion, what can we do with this building? But fortunately, we've lost the ability to use ARPA funds to renovate this space, because by the time we get it, ARPA funds are going to go. So then the timing is there as far as ARPA funds and the use of this building after the port leaves, so. So anyways, I, I, I just, it's just my idea, John, of what we, infrastructure needs, but that's what's, that's the discussion we need to have in our past meeting. Sounds good.
Okay. Thank you, Alan.
Thank you very much.
And I, you know, that I was saying, Kitty, that they, they should be in touch with you if you had this ARPA meeting.
Okay.
All right, can we add Miller?
Good morning, commissioners.
All right, Miller. Can I make anything to add to your report?
Well. Well.
Right, move to accept and file UT monthly report as presented. Second motion. Is it favor?
Aye.
Aye. So, my question on the Central Maine Highlands Fire EMS District. Are we ready to take action to join it? Is that what you're asking? Because the agreement.
What I wanted to do is get all of this stuff in front of you. We have to make a decision before July 1st.
So, this was, I, I, you know, I studied all this, and to me, I'm ready to say, you know, move to join it, and we know what the cost is. But, you know, the, all the documentation doesn't mention Hancock County UT.
Yes, it does. On the, uh,
Well, like, like, when I say that, there's nothing, there isn't a, a document for us to sign like there is for the other municipal.
No, there isn't.
And the UT.
Not at this time.
Yeah. So, this was, I'm just going to throw this out there. I want to move that the Hank, that the Hancock County UT joined the Central Maine Highlands Fire EMS District number one, with the cost for 2024 being $24,000, beginning July 1, 2024, provided that the district is formed as recommended by the, by the UT director.
Excuse me, 2024 is $28,000.
That's right. That's what I had here, but for some reason I said 2020. So it's 2024 and 28,000.
And I think this is the right way to go, because otherwise, if we, if we don't join and we stay outside of this district and just contract with the district, number one, we're not going to have any voice in what happens. And number two, they're going to charge us more money, uh, the upcoming year instead of 28,000 would be 30,800.
So your recommendation is to approve this motion, Millen?
Yes.
Fix it?
And I think at some point, I'll have a document to bring back to you to sign for the official action, but.
Like these, in other words?
Yes.
That was my question, okay. So I'm going to second the motion. Are you in the discussion? Allos in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, commissioners.
Yo. You right?
Good morning. You done, Millen?
Yes, well, go ahead.
Okay, uh, the only thing I got to add to the, uh, monthly report was I am, I am working with UMaine still on the, uh, short-term lease on the ramp area. Um, they did get back to me finally with an agreement. I've, Doc, I made some adjustments to it, send it back to them, send it to Michael, send it to Rudman Winchell, so, uh, once we get that all squared away, you'll, you'll be seeing that at some point, but, uh, that's the only addition I got to the report.
I'm going to move to, I'm going to move to accept and file the report manager's monthly report as presented. Second the motion?
Allos in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So the other one is just a, it's a, really an accounting situation for Jacobs. We've done it in the past. They just need to allot their time to something, so they've asked to just set up an account, and that's kind of what this is all about, you know, not to exceed 12,000 before we get the grant, uh, application, the contract with them.
So I'm going to move to engage with Jacobs Engineering to perform work on the snow removal and equipment SRE building prior to signing a contract and grant approval not to exceed $12,000 as requested.
Second the motion? Allos in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's all I got.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll see ya.
Yeah.
I'm going to move to accept and file the EMA Director's monthly report as presented.
Second the motion? Aye. In favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right.
What's going on?
He's wanting to add a new jail. Um, first is we're impressed with Mr. Ian Foster, the Corporal, Detective 315, 2024, step 10C. He's been an officer with us for over a year now, um, and worked the night shift corporal, the SAGO agency, and promoted to corporal to help people treat. We don't have, do not have a corporal on that ship, that's not.
Some hope. Um, second from discussion. How long's he been with you? Was he hired as an A?
Yeah, they, they, when they came, we got the C step, where he is now, he's C, so we certified.
So he was C as a corrections officer?
Yep, and he's going to just be later moved into a.
Okay, so he's coming over from nine C to a 10C. Is that correct?
Correct, yes. Yep.
And that combines?
Yep.
Okay, because I was thinking of getting. The motion had to have a 10th of raise.
He's got to step, stepping with the news.
So he, he goes the appropriate step, and, and he throws appropriate grade at the same steps?
Right.
Well, almost, right. Allos in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And just conversation on the staffing. I sent an email a while ago. Um, I had a continued conversation with Mary Anne about this. Um, county manager, Mary Anne, Sheriff Kane, I sat down, just had some staff coming to me with concerns about hours of working, and such. We're trying to address that. So, I threw out some ideas. I don't know if that's the right way to go, but, um, like last week, we had 100 hours overtime. All of that sick stuff, so we're going to recommand it, no overtime. So I think, what I would like to see is possible is to, um, start with, see if, if I can find the person, it's one more flexible schedule as a temporary full-time officer to see if we can verify that it's going to work, to try to cut down overtime. Having the staff required, their vacation time and stuff, three weeks out, so we can schedule that for us. They may be working nights for this week, days the next week, try to, try to cut back on overtime, try to give the people, um, a little bit of relief knowing that they're all, we've never denied vacations, but we'll get to the point that if I can't find coverage, I'm, I can compel people to cover.
So how's the contract comply with your suggestion?
That's right. They're all, I've talked to the, uh, they, they don't have a shop steward right now. They're working on that. I've talked to the couple of, three people that are interested in it. Um, they're willing to try anything to try to keep things from being. And I talked to Joe, I, I messaged to Joe about it, telling him what we're trying to do. Um, easiest thing is, people come to work, that'd be the easiest solution, just have continued people calling out. Um, and I emailed Joe, um, hasn't got back to me. The only email I was, is that I'll get back to you if I have an issue, and never, never get back to you. So, um, could I find that person? I don't know for that flexibility, but at $3,000 a week overtime.
So is this an additional, uh?
It's more efficient, yeah. And right now, we're, right now, we're full minus our community correction specialists.
You want your community correction specialist back, right?
We do.
Yeah. How are you making out for that?
Not good.
Okay. Uh, back on this, how would you pay for this additional staff person?
It would be out of our, be over, out of our hot-time budget. Um, and if we could save some funds and we see that the overtime is there, we, uh, seek to make transfers, move overtime funds into that. Right now, just be paid as a hot-time officer.
So which one of the options are you talking about? Is it option two?
There's really, it's not, this is about, this is like option five, I'm talking about. But I was, I had the conversation with the, with some of your staff, and they, and they thought like an option five, they're, they're trying to kick around, and that's 22 09 an hour, I think it is. I think it's a hot-time officer, $20 an hour, count that. Um, they would gain sick time and all, all that, all the, all the gain in the past, that's what it's, it's. But I, I don't know if it's the answer, but I think it's.
If the jail has traditionally been understaffed, we could do the same sort of study like we did with Department 10 and see where we land. This might be a case for putting in a person and being paid for out of ARPA.
But it sounds to me like.
But I'd have to do the, I'd have to do the four or five-year study like we did for, for sheriffs.
But it sounds to me like, and I want to make that version, they had to have a, a layoff, a layoff or something in, during the, during the.
Yeah, yeah, a deficit and possibly people that have, that were covered by ARPA. And in every case, it was always zero for Department 10. They had no people during that history that were paid for by ARPA.
Same as true in the jail.
Yeah, it, it's probably going to come out the same, but I, I can still try to.
Well, that was going to be my suggestion too, is that, Michael, is there anything in the jail that we pay for out of jail budget that we could pay for out of that money and transfer that money to personnel?
I mean, I think we've talked about different things in the past, but I think probably we'd have to get together and look at, seeing, I mean, a lot of this stuff, a big portion of your budget, it really is personnel costs, really, but, um, and you funded a lot of different things with fun, you know, with funds already, in terms of like capital stuff or other needed, things like that, so.
You can't think of anything in your team that we, that we could save some?
I would, no, because I don't have a good grasp on what the intention.
But you know, it's equipment, I mean, and stuff like that, but you don't have a, you don't have the count.
No.
But wouldn't the numbers, because you have been so short, wouldn't the numbers? This is a little different than the sheriff's department.
That's right.
It's worth it, Jim.
I think it's worth doing, because, you know, I was reading through these options, Tim, and it's like, option, option four, I mean, that's just not sustainable. Option.
No.
Uh, uh, option three or two? Maybe. Number, you know, I don't, I don't know what the answer is, because I don't know the workings of it, but I, I just, it just seems like what's happening up there can't keep happening.
How does call-out work with the union contract? I'm just kind of curious, like.
Call-out within.
Well, I mean, like, I guess, like, you know, in my world.
While on the shift, they call out sick.
You're fired.
And we're, we're working on that with the, with the few who have sick time, on being called out all the time, discussing that. And that's what's happened is, we've got some people that have been there seven years and they call out sick, twelve days a year. Have no time on the works.
You know, the problem, gentlemen, is that when you compel an officer to work, whatnot, and then he calls up sick, he works the same number of hours, but he gets time and a half when he gets called out.
Right.
He gets his regular pay for sick day, so I mean, uh, and that, it actually benefits him financially to call out in the same work week that he gets compelled to work, and.
Pardon?
And I'm going to, I'm going to say it publicly, whatnot, they are abusing, if not defrauding, the county by falsifying their, their sick time. And it's, it's got to be the case, because it's, if, if they're not defrauding, it's, there's a frigging epidemic.
We're, we're discussing the past about overtime, they work a 42-hour average work week. Overtime after 42. It'd be a nightmare for payroll, I might have to track it, but, so, it's what you worked in a week. If you call out sick today and you have overtime, well, and you work the next shift, you don't get paid overtime until you hit your 42-hour mark.
You're talking about overtime as actual time worked overtime?
Yeah.
Yeah, so you're not paying overtime unless it's over 42 hours.
No, no, that's what I.
I'm guessing, yeah.
Yeah, no, you get paid overtime anything outside your regular normal hours. You call out, if you work Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, you call out Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, then also you work, you work you, um, Wednesday and Friday, you get three days of sick time and two days of overtime.
All, all overtime is time and a half, because we want to avoid that. But that's contractual, that's why, I don't think I want to agree to that.
No, they have a great contract, there's no doubt about it.
And it's a, it's a bookkeeping nightmare, I should say. You have to set up, you know, a period, work period.
Your staff is getting burned out and they're just trying to need some help and. Probably the best thing, I think, would be the option, what, hiring two more full-time officers on night shift.
That was.
That way, if somebody calls out sick on night shift, they're, they're only messing with their shift, their shift should have brought the drop back to the mandated minimum of four.
Where do you pay for those two?
That's right, exactly.
I mean, I mean, that's not, that's not a, I mean, rhetorical, but it's, I believe.
I have, that's, I did, like we all said, it's hard to go back to taxpayers next year.
Yeah, but I thought we maxed out how much we could, the tax.
We, we did, but I don't know what the, that's the thing, we don't have the funds to do it, but that would be the ideal.
That, that limit, is that like the LD1 limit, like, we'll, under some situation you can increase?
Well, it, that one's pretty, pretty hard and fast, but there are things that you can petition and go through a process to ask the legislature to look at something based on, you have to perform studies and other stuff, I believe is the case.
And I think this is the ideal time for staff to also get on board with this, because the contract is up. Also get on board with this, because the contract is up this year, like we know we should have a contract with you this year. Now's the time to have this conversation. To get this stuff in the contract, if we get to that, instead of us trying to.
Who to lose this, this shop steward?
I think, um.
Who to lose?
Um, cross when he came out back.
And you haven't replaced him?
It's Stanley when he went to the prison. So, no, for heaven, there's been people in and out.
So. As I read these, option one made the most sense. Yeah, but how do we, now that, if we could find that money. That's. Well, we can't find that money because it's a state thing, that's where I'm.
So. I mean, this is part of, and it's part of my learning experience as well, but the dilemma you have is like, Tim put together a budget as the jail administrator. That budget that he puts together, ultimately is more than what we're allowed to expend, really, that's the way that I understand this process. So really, when we're doing budgeting, you ought to be looking at both eleven and Department Twenty-four in terms of what he's proposing. Because eventually you gotta get that money from somewhere. So you are only allowed to ask the taxpayers for so much.
Yep.
A, and that's what's mandated by, but the difference of that has to be made up in other ways, whether it's grants or other programs or something else. Um, so yeah, I mean, to get it to balance, and, and like last year, I mean, I believe we ended up twenty-three with a deficit, if that's correct, yeah.
Yeah.
Which means you overspend.
We were giving.
Hundred and eighty, hundred and eighty thousand.
We were giving them my interest.
Yeah.
To keep them going.
We've asked for it, supposedly that is coming.
There, and.
We get the supplementals.
There's something in the supplemental right now, but.
When you say supplemental, that would be money from the state to make up that deficit.
Raising additional money.
Talking about right this month.
Yes, two or, two or four million they give them.
They gotta do something.
Split through all fifty counties.
They make them, make us do all these things and don't pay for it.
All, all of us here have been putting together information for weeks to give to them, and each time, all the groups that are advocating for this. Get shot down, shot down, shot down, I'm surprised they're even entertaining anything right now. And we, and we're happy enough just to accept the crumbs because we're so desperate.
This is Maine municipal saying that they'll increase the tax base, tax rate. So they're basically, the state's telling us, we're not going to allow you to decide how much you wanna spend on your jail. That's, that's what's wrong with this whole thing, is that we, as taxpayers in Hancock County, should be deciding how much we want to spend on our facility. Only tax the people in Hancock County, and the people in Hancock County, uh, people that pay the taxes, and what's the state's business to tell us? How much to.
And, and there's no. Well, I think we ought to do that study.
I can't, I can't, I don't, I don't know.
Monica's gonna tell you that she, on the face of it, it won't fly because we just haven't had a decrease in staff.
Oh, you're not saying.
Because we're running on mental staffing.
And you have been, oh, huh.
We run on mental staffing because that's, and that's still at points exceeds a budget, what we did.
If she's willing to do it, I think it's a good exercise, but I think we're not, even, even Monica's not optimistic that that's.
You're not.
No.
I mean, I'd be very surprised, but it, it is a different scenario, I was gonna say before, a little, are a little bit different.
There's no program that we can set up. To support jail and being leased ARPA?
How radical do you wanna be?
Well.
Listen, when I touch say radical. That the community corrections officer for the jail becomes an employee of the commissioner's office, it's not even in the jail budget. Now, it's quite radical, but it doesn't add to the jail budget, see what I'm saying? So if you wanna get creative.
But that's a union position.
We, listen, Joe, Joe is not going to, you know, anyways, if we could, but I'm just talking about how radical you wanna be to solve this problem, because. It could be that the state is imploding, they want us to have more money, but they can't raise more money because of the political resistance up there, whatnot, but if we could find a way to circumvent that, nobody would, nobody would say anything. So I'm saying that if you wanna get creative, and you wanna test the system. We do things like that. Because that's what it's going to take, is we're, we're not gonna get more money, we need to decrease the money, the cost of what we're spending up there, so that we can put it towards staffing. I mean, we've already done that with maintenance taking over all this, a lot of this is subtle there, but uh. I mean, there's things like snowplow, are you still paying half the snowplow? See, take all the snowplow, you put it in maintenance, take all the, all trashy, we'll put it in maintenance, take it off, all of the repairs.
Fuel.
Fuel, put it all into the maintenance department, and then free that money up towards personal services.
I will.
That's just moving things around.
Yeah, it frees up, it frees up, yeah, every.
Family can exceed all you want.
Yeah, because we can exceed on the other end. Yeah, because if you're gonna say fifty thousand dollars to the jail, that's fifty thousand dollars you can apply towards personal services. Because you've taken it right out of the jail budget, and you put it somewhere else in county government that's not being applied to the jail's limit, so.
Speaking of community corrections specialists, a lot of, a lot of people, one of the roadblocks we're gonna do, that's also gets tied in with a nurse, help with the medical side of stuff, so people are kind of. Wanna be hands-off on medical, which I understand. I've reached out to Gordon Smith with the opioid funds that we have, to see if we can hire a CRMA that would. Be assistants with a nurse, and that would, and the community corrections process could just be used with the jail, but I've not heard back from Gordon to see if that's possible.
And Gordon is, is.
Is a, like the liaison for the state's opioid.
Basically, attorney general's office, but he's that, that's one of his primary functions.
Have opioid funds.
Yes, and I'm trying to use those funds to hire CRMA, which they look like they're running twenty-two, twenty-five dollars an hour, during four days a week, that would, maybe be. Maybe we could promote within. Um, set to hire somebody, the people just don't wanna touch the medications, and, well, they don't mind touching medications, but. Appointments and stuff like that, they're involved, and they just don't want to, so, CRMA would be huge in the jail, but again, we have no money for that. And I wondered if these overfunds should cover that, I would think, straight face taps that.
I'd like to find something useful.
That's right, I think straight face, that, that, that would, that would pay, we could use that fund, so. But right now, just.
Just throwing stuff at you, you know, in a clearinghouse for things that you shouldn't be, and next you're having to pay for it, that's, that's what I'm trying to, figure out how to tackle.
But this was just conversation, Mary Anne, where we've been in, was trying to, um.
I got a question for you, you're, uh, hundred and eight thousand, that's listed on your option one. Is that the cost if we, for a full year, if we just essentially started in April or May?
I would want to sit, before we cut that, that number, I'd like to have the conversation with financials to see, because I don't know the bike aside of stock and the cost of things.
So we look at it to see, like, in theory, if we had two new people by June, what's our cost would be?
Right, you'd essentially pay for one person, for sure.
You know, I'd really like to have that figured out sooner than later, I mean, we'll call it June first, for seven months of the, the remaining year. And. John is open to moving some of that cost of the jail, some of the infrastructure cost of the jail out of that. And trying to find money elsewhere to pay for all.
And. What? You're, you're saying you're spending a lot, some of the overtime is gonna fund that. Right?
Right, because you, we won't be filling, if someone calls out sick on the night shift, you, you. Day shift we get by, someone calls up sick, we're on six on days, but it just takes, like, just the potential shift, and I have our own transports, because. We need the people on the floor, so night shift, if somebody calls out, we just, when I'm gonna compel somebody to work eight, eighteen hour shifts. And they're just gonna run, drop back to state standards.
What's your year-to-date store overtime? Is that already a year-to-date overtime?
I, I don't have that.
That's the other problem, if, if their overtime account is being exceeded year-to-date, there's gotta be some money.
Yeah, no, I don't think we've, I don't think we've exhausted all of it.
I, it's not exhausted, but if you need, actually, you need fifty thousand a month to get through the rest of the year, and you've learned your body now, so you've got a deficit to make up, just. Just to, to keep.
Because we have had some interest, people, people can't leave work for a hot time job, we've had some people ask them.
Tim, you're preaching to the choir, I think, I think it's time now to get serious about how we're addressing the financial stance, give us those figures on what you, you think it would cost the county for two COs, starting in June. Okay?
All right, thank you. Thank you.
We got to add to your report.
Uh. Uh, nothing? Any questions?
I move to accept the file facility director's monthly report is presented.
Sign of the motion. I'll listen favor.
Aye.
Aye. So is there a big hole on these railings and stuff?
Uh, yes, it's like, uh, the company that provides any kind of railing is back ordered for. Who knows?
Look, I have a manag, has the steps been poured and everything?
Steps are poured, those, they're all functioning back end, temporary rail has gone in.
So can you use the entrance now?
We are using the entrance, yes.
So, this isn't perfectly hosted?
No, and I moved the focus on to, we've had, got holdups with the railing and with the snowmelt. And luckily, we've had the weather that we haven't had tons of salt on that fresh concrete, so that's good. And so. Uh, we'll move the focus to, or to the storefront fixing that entrance, part of the tower work, which we'll be doing this week to, 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 uh. Move forward with, with the design, and the drawings for that, since it's an order material. And, uh. The rest of the stuff will wait, of course, they're not gonna do the concrete repair, the ceiling, until weather permits. And then we've got the paint job, hopefully, they'll all culminate around the same time, but. You know, and. With the contracting world, I don't know, it just seems like. You're at their mercy.
Well, I think it's getting better.
Yeah. Let's hope. And relative to contracting, you mentioned infrastructure a little urgent, oh, we get off, off topic too much, but we do have a bunch of quick, easy. Like no brainer items, like the paving, and building the ceiling, and masonry restorations that we could, feeling. Can't, wouldn't it pay for it some way?
Tempers off, so I don't know what the background is.
Yeah, and those are kind of the things you were, were talking about, Michael, that you had sort of a list, huh?
Yeah, that's some of the things that, we've got some other stuff that we've already, that he's given me as well.
And we're planning on the generator proposals, things like that.
So that's gonna be. I mean, these will all be things that, yeah, but I'll get together with Dennis again before we.
And I've got a, a guy looking at giving me, uh, pricing and schedule information on paving all three of our lots. Things like that, just so you have the information plenty to make a decision on such things, that'll be forthcoming. Uh, so not a ton to, to update on the steps, the storefront part, we're, we're hopefully to, gonna bring that all together at once, you know. And to put this. Job to, to rest, finally. And then the old jail. The, uh, Assland Hall's been on site for a, a week. And they've got the, the sheriff's residence side of the northern, it's, it's all, uh, been, uh, raked out and prepared. They're finding, I think, what they expected to find, what we thought they was soft mortar, it's, needs to be done. And they're gonna move to, moving around, they can't really mix and do any of the pointing now because of the temperatures. Uh, so they're doing all the prep work that they can.
Which means removing the old stuff?
The old mortar and, and brickwork's necessary to do so, you'll notice there's an old repair down, uh, near the end of the building. Got a bunch of brick out, that was from a prior repair, which was not, uh, done properly. Uh, they've removed two or maybe three by now of the baskets over the windows, which is really, you know, kind of. Makes the place look a lot, a lot more like an old jail, those barred windows and so forth, and they're gonna remove, be removed, the iron frames that they hang upon as well. And, uh.
So that means stuff's not falling off, that's good.
Yeah, they're, they're, as they do their raking, they clean out the material and everything that's loose, put it down where they put it back together, they're gonna use the same material where we're back in. Just to clean.
So there hasn't been frost?
We're lucky, but those, uh, those, uh, fabric enclosures up above, they're all full of material. You know, all, all mortar and stuff that, you know, gets spit out incrementally as re-saws.
You mean the plastic that they put on?
Yes, yeah, so, it's, that's, that has done its job. And they've got one section down there, we'll do more, and, uh, of course, Carla's here, if you have any other questions for me.
We, you know, risk something falling, you know, is, is less because we don't have the freezing authority, is that correct?
For sure.
Taken away the barriers, so we don't have the protection.
Yeah, well, we have the protection of the staging now, so.
Have we taken the barriers away from back in the sunset?
No, but we'll probably do that next week, as they get ready to build up a staging, we'll move those out of the way.
We strip packing for those areas?
I think we'll have to, the, the pull-in parking, we'll get five back there, I think we're gonna be reduced to only two, and they'll park like parallels, spots. Because they'll have screening on that sign, and they, they are able to enter the scaffold from the side, rather than have to, like, go between tires or something. That would be completely, no traffic there.
Carla, would you like to speak?
I would just like to give an update since I submitted my report to Dennis on the project. Uh, because it does have to do with you as neighbors and, and, uh, the land and the, the site. Um, so we've just been notified by Senator Collins' office that we've received, uh, CDS, uh, earmark for five hundred thousand dollars. Um, it's been two years since we last, we sort of made our, our presentation to sort of, of starting this process. So at this point, um, with rents, with the original two hundred thousand dollars, we have about eight hundred thousand dollars that we raised. Which, and why I'm sharing this, of course.
That's including that five.
That is correct, that is correct, so we're eight, you could take twenty, um, but, um. We're going to use that money to replace the slate with, that is obviously still a danger, because slates have been falling off. Um, and so we're going to, uh, get on, uh, a bidding process once we understand federal procurement. And get that started as soon as possible, we do have a deadline to utilize those funds, so we have to get that going anyway. So that will, after the brick, this is, after the brickwork is done, that process will be also happening, I'm not sure when, certainly, I'd be happy to keep you posted. So it's good news, that's, you are my first, uh, people to tell, so it was great to, to be here.
Thank you.
All set, gents? Thanks very much.
Thank you. Is your flooring project done?
Oh, not quite done. Underway, they're about halfway through the office and hallway, and should be done today.
I move to accept the file ours, the C, director's report is presented.
Sign of the motion. I'll listen favor.
Aye.
Aye.
I move to approve, excuse, move to approve hiring Brandon Young from Blue Hill as a dispatcher at Step A is requested.
Sign of the motion. I'll listen favor.
Aye.
Aye.
I move to approve hiring Danielle Jo Berg from Warner Harbor as a dispatcher at Step A is requested.
Sign of the motion. I'll listen favor.
Aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry I butchered that name.
Jo Berg.
Jo Berg, yeah. I'm gonna move to approve accepting the resignation of dispatcher Chelsea Hacker effective March sixth.
Sign of the motion. I'll listen favor.
Aye.
You can't, you can't, you can't take with the other.
You can't move a pair of you. Well, I was gonna say French, but then I.
It might be English.
Yeah, I. Yeah, at least claim you can't win.
All right. At your monthly report, do you have anything to add to it?
Move to accept the file human resource directors monthly report is presented.
Sign of the motion. Almost in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
And the next thing is. Move to approve the proposed workplace limitation policy as presented and required by MRS Title twenty six, section six oh four. I've actually run across this before because of project. By Harvard, somebody required out the same.
Just wanted to make sure we were complying.
Yeah. That was my question.
Well. Have you, you said? Obviously, it's the recommendation of HF.
Correct. It's, it's pretty standard.
It's actually in statute.
Hi, Red.
That says January first.
So we did, I did suggest Mary Ann that she make the, the language in it. Consistent with the statute, which says that they, that the employer shall make reasonable efforts to provide employees. With X, Y, and Z is outlined in the. We have just, Mary Ann went up and kind of walked through the building and has identified if we got into that position, potentially. Three spots that would be better than a bathroom. That could be utilized to meet these kind of criteria. Now, does that mean every department would have an area beside them? Right now, no, because obviously we don't have that space, so.
Well, and it doesn't require you to do that.
No.
No, but it's, we, we have a place on each floor. We have locations where people can go.
Okay, but actually it just says that we will do it, doesn't say that we have to have it identified.
Doesn't identify how.
No, we figured we might as well identify.
Yeah.
It's something we asked us.
Yeah, but as part of the policy, no.
Yes, that's, that's.
It's just saying what the, that, what the statute says, which is we're gonna make reasonable effort.
That's why I wrote this.
Yeah.
What freight this could be?
Oh.
I mean, think about it, I mean. You've got an employee's baby. That's the word, baby's being babysitting. Take care. Take care provider runs the baby in. Four times a day for breastfeeding. Correct?
Well, this is supposed to do really expressing milk.
Yeah.
So it's not really the baby coming in, it really has to do with being able, a private area to use a breast pump.
Yeah.
Per law.
Is that what expressing means?
Correct.
Okay, so this is, this is actual, the actual breastfeeding, it's using the pump?
Correct.
And, and in federal buildings. They actually have to. Build.
Rooms.
Rooms to a certain spec. Cause they have different standards, just. It's. This completes.
It's really a thing.
Yeah, this, this really just keeps us complying.
All right, I have a second motion. Is there any other discussion? Almost in favor?
Yeah.
Aye.
Aye. Move to approve monthly bill and warrants is presented.
Second. Almost in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now we can open our own bid.
Bid. We did send out bids to RHR Smith and to Runyon, Kirstine and. We never got, we never got a response from Runyon, Kirstine and Let in Portland. And we did get a turn down from RHR Smith, so this is our only.
Only actual. You do have a copy of the letter in your pack that RHR sent us.
Well, I mean, you can't. So they don't really like give us a dollar about it.
So.
No, we think.
Probably, I mean, obviously, we haven't seen it, so it may be contained within each one of those, which I believe should all be the same, they're just all the copies, but. Can't say that a hundred percent.
Michael.
Yeah.
Our first times.
That's gonna have to review this, we're gonna come back. It's up to you, right? So I.
Well.
I am seeing some, you know, we kept.
I see billing here, there's no amount.
There's a sealed cost dollar bid, just appendix A, just about in the middle.
Yeah, appendix A one.
Uh, there's a white page.
Yeah.
Appendix A.
appendix A one.
But this is the cost of the.
Here's one of those little nuts that we could probably pay for, uh. Pay for the jails portion. We could just pay for the jails portion.
We have been taking that out of the year.
Uh, we haven't received a bill from, from them in a year.
But traditionally, we.
Yes.
It pays.
Yes.
So. Are these amounts aligned with what we've been paying Monica?
I have to do the adding. No, I think they're fairly reasonable.
So you don't.
The last bill we paid in total was in, in, uh, twenty twenty-two, we paid this same, uh, firm. A total of twenty-two, twenty-two thousand, so I think.
They're bidding thirty this summer?
They're bidding, um. Well, for the five, you'd have to, I'd have to go across the other way. I'd have to do some.
Oh, wait a minute, what's on?
For one year.
What's eighteen thousand?
Year by year.
Yeah.
Eighteen thousand, what's the eighteen?
Yeah.
So it's actually less.
Um, it probably.
The UT, were you calculating the total cost while?
Oh, yeah, uh, it may also include the UT as well, yeah.
Okay, these are ours, right, these?
Yeah.
Yep, yes. So. It probably depends on whether, uh, whatever single audits were included. As well, those just, those, uh. It might, they have, they have listed six thousand here for a single audit, so.
So it's from Chester Kearney?
Yes.
And we'll have you review it, make sure it meets all the requirements.
Okay.
Do you think this is a good one?
I think we don't have a lot of choice.
I know.
There's no reason to believe in taking one to do anything dramatically different than they've built, right?
I don't, I don't believe so, other than we haven't seen a bill yet for the twenty twenty-two audit, which they just now.
But we don't have the audit.
Just, we just got it.
Just got it.
Same, almost in the same time.
Okay, so. I should be. Adding these across, right?
I believe so, yeah.
So that's roughly twenty-two thousand.
No, well, he, he did the math, it was eighteen five.
Five.
Well, if you.
Plus the UT. Yes, yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, eighteen five plus the UT, which is twenty-two thousand.
Yep.
Uh.
Oh, I see, UT's going to.
Yeah. So. ARPA? Five-year contract?
I mean.
I, I mean, we budget, we budget for these.
We, I mean, we couldn't do, like, this isn't one of the things like with IT where you could say, we're gonna pay you five years upfront. Because we don't know what those costs are gonna be, I mean, and obviously. Yeah, I, I don't think we can arrange it that way. You do have to have, even if you have contracts in place, you still have to expend all those funds. By the end of twenty twenty-six. So. If, I mean, we can check as part of that into whether or not you can plug. The actual payment maybe of. Twenty threes and like twenty fours audit. Possibly twenty-five, but that depends on timing, if you're going to expend all those funds, but I, but I don't see how we'd be able to front load five years just off of one-time payment.
Aye, okay. And, okay, so that, that's the workings of that, but. Does that argument to be made that?
Maybe one.
Some, uh, paying it out of ARPA?
Well, I think that's a, one of the.
Yeah, that's the point, that's the question.
Yeah, we can take a look at that as part of.
I mean, it's a stretch, I realize, but, um.
And part of that will also entail a discussion with them as well, obviously, so.
To me. There's a certain risk I think in paying too far ahead of this because.
Definitely.
Huge. Not a little bit.
Well, there's a, there's a service involved, we want nobody satisfied.
If they had, there's nothing to.
Yeah.
And there's nothing really, other than then having to take them to court to. Have to take money and they go out of business, walk away or whatever, you know. There's a variety of different things that could happen.
Well, yeah, but you could at least get. Twenty-three and twenty-four. I don't think you could get twenty-five.
I, I doubt it, given the timing.
Even if it's twenty-four, it'd be a stretch.
Yeah.
So.
We budgeted this for twenty-three though.
Yes.
Twenty-four, right?
Yes, in the current budget.
Okay, would you budget twenty-two?
Uh. I had budget for, well, I had, I didn't get the, uh, numbers that were budgeted for the other departments, but just for us, twelve thousand. For just the, uh.
General fund of the area.
General fund. Uh, and that's not the, that's not the airport portion.
Okay, that's true.
But I think that we need more than. Cover what is needed with the budget in each department. Like I said, we may be able to, uh, also cover the jail. The single audits usually come from the, any federal money, so the AIPs in the airport. Um, so a lot of times the single audit gets charged to the airport. Or in this case, in, uh, for twenty twenty-two, they did a single audit, I believe, on the federal ARPA funds.
That's what, that's what the single audit needs, so it's like.
Yep.
Well, can we, can we approve this? Can we approve the bid today?
Cause I feel like this is fairly reasonable, especially looking five years out. You know, in, in five years.
If Monica comes back with a, with a funding suggestion, we can deal with it.
They're coming, I mean, they're, they're, they're sticking to it for five years to the same price, they're not showing an increase.
So. Uh. We would be accepting. At, at the twenty-two thousand. Per year, is, I guess, what I should say, right?
Yes.
So, or, or, are you comfortable enough with this that I can make that motion?
Aye. And then if Monica wants to come back in the future, we can propose funding it. A different source of budget, that's a different, especially for another day.
Uh, so would this motion be in order, move to accept the bid from Chester and, uh, Kearney in the sum of twenty-two thousand? Per year for the next five years? Which is basically what this says, right?
Yes. And, uh, what I have to do.
They've made a. They've made a mistake. Also, yeah, it's critical. Look at the date that I was from, like. Audit period of thirteen, I have.
It should be twenty-three.
It should be twenty-three.
Twenty-seven. Also, I have to, I would have to be able to pull this sheet out for you. For you guys to sign.
So I guess we're not ready for that motion.
Is what you're saying, Bill?
Yes, I think we're, we're ready, uh.
I think you can approve it, and then if we have to gather signatures later.
Can we swing your topic?
It's stuck in the middle of the book.
Is it, is it that white page?
Yeah, yeah, and that's their certification. On behalf of the firm.
Where is that? Is that another page? Is there another page for us to sign?
It's a couple pages ahead of that, uh. Ahead of the appendix A. It's a proposal and contact acceptance. Which, uh, this report just, we have to sign and then.
So if your motion.
Maybe it looks like maybe Michael can sign.
Well, if your motion. For the chairman to sign.
Yep.
Your motion was to accept this proposal as a bid.
Twenty-two thousand per year.
Chairman to sign.
Okay, so move to accept the bid from Chester M. Care, uh, Kearney. Sum of twenty-two thousand per year for the next five years as submitted and authorized the chair to sign.
I'm sorry. I really think you need to decline because the next five years, but this is only twenty-nine. This is not.
It's for the years twenty twenty-three through twenty twenty-seven.
Yep, it's twenty-four, twenty-three to twenty-seven, so for the, for the time period of two thousand twenty-three to two thousand twenty-seven. Inclusive.
Yeah. So I should say. Uh, per, twenty-two thousand per year for the years twenty, twenty twenty-three through twenty twenty-seven.
Yes.
Uh.
Or you can even just be, for each fiscal year beginning January first, twenty twenty-three through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-seven. If you wanna get more precise, but. Just depends on your level.
So. For. For. January. One. Twenty twenty-three through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-seven.
And, I mean, if we're being really particular here, just to irritate everybody. You may want to clarify too, that that's for the unorganized territories for Hancock County for the period of July first, twenty twenty-two to, to thirty, twenty twenty-seven. They are on two different time periods. So. Take what you just did and then put and for the unorganized territories of Hancock County.
June thirty.
From the, for the period of July first, twenty twenty-two. To June thirty of twenty twenty-seven.
Of January of, uh, June?
June thirty of twenty twenty-seven. So July first, twenty twenty-two to June thirty of twenty twenty-seven.
July first of twenty-three.
All right, that's indicating what they had there, but yeah.
Yep. Sorry, Paul, it's July first of twenty twenty-three. Through June thirtieth. Twenty twenty-seven. It's the, it's the UT's fiscal year is July to June.
Is that five years though? Does that compute?
Yes.
It does, well.
Yep.
Good.
Okay, so I'm gonna read the whole thing. Move to accept the bid from Chester on period, Kearney, sum of twenty-two thousand per year for the period. January one, twenty twenty-three. Through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-seven. And for the UT of Hancock County for the period of. July one, twenty twenty-three through June thirtieth of twenty twenty-seven.
So I, just looking at this real quick, I think that's, I think they are right in what they propose, because.
It should be twenty twenty-two, not twenty twenty-three.
Yeah, cause it wouldn't be five years then.
That's right.
Cause twenty-three, twenty-four would be one year, twenty-four, twenty-five would be two.
That's right.
Twenty-three, uh, twenty-five, twenty-six would be three, and twenty-six, twenty-seven would be four, so it would have to be.
It's either that or it's gotta be through December, through June. No, you know what it should be? It should be Ju- July one of twenty twenty-three. Hey, June thirtieth of twenty twenty-eight.
Yeah, so you gotta adjust it one way or the other.
Have they done the twenty-one, twenty-two budget yet, Monica?
They on that?
Audit? Have they done the twenty?
I believe that's. See, I have to look. Sorry.
It's, it depends on whether or not they've done that budget, done that audit yet, because it.
I doubt they have.
That, that would be included in this, well.
I'll say, what did they say? Did they say twenty two?
So, I mean, what they, if you look.
FY twenty three is what they have listed here, and FY twenty three is July first of twenty twenty three. To June thirtieth of twenty twenty four.
So what I was going by is, if you look at the letter that we were just talking about signing, the audit scope and report schedules. It indicates that we will begin kind of, conduct the audits covering operations of the county for various fees fiscal year beginning January first, twenty twenty three. Through December, uh twenty, December thirty first, twenty twenty seven, and for the unorganized territories of Hancock County. For the period of July first, twenty twenty two to June thirtieth, twenty twenty seven, is what they put.
Okay.
But they also get the date wrong on the front cover, so that doesn't mean that it's correct or not, so.
What if I just said?
I need to get clarification from them.
What if I just said? This. Because they're on different fiscal years, if I just said FY twenty. Three. Through FY twenty seven.
That's what it says here.
That covers everything. Now, by those names, right?
I think FY twenty three, Monica, is twenty two, twenty three, twenty four. City also has a review, looking at a twenty. I budget, which is July first, twenty four to June thirtieth, twenty five.
Yeah, FY twenty three.
So I think twenty three is, is July first, twenty two to June thirtieth, twenty three.
Okay.
I think we need clarification.
Yep. I have, I have to go and look, I can't, so.
I don't agree with that, oh, I like your motion though, it's yes. No, but I mean.
So just include those FYs, yeah.
Yeah, why don't you say FY twenty, twenty three to FY twenty seven, uh twenty two, FY twenty seven?
Twenty three, twenty four, twenty five, twenty six, twenty seven.
FY twenty three to FY twenty seven, just UT FY.
Yeah, so, but if I just leave the UT out of it and I just say fiscal years. I'm wondering if we should do any motions at all. We should get clarification and take this up next time, because there's no.
Yeah.
Burning hurry.
Yeah.
That's what I think. Does that make sense?
I mean, we certainly won't be able to, and even if we tell them potentially, we've still gotta get on their schedule, so. But it, that's probably get telling them that you're gonna finalize at the next meeting, and it's, they're not gonna be doing anything here next week, so.
Oh, it's a problem, putting something off after we voted half an hour.
I know, but it would just be formality then, because we passed it out, but. I, I'm willing to make the motion if Seth thinks it makes sense, but.
We know what we're voting on, we know exactly what we're voting, right, Monica? He's gonna charge us twenty two thousand dollars for five years worth of audits, that's what we're voting.
Right.
Bottom line.
Pardon?
Said bottom line, yes.
Yeah.
If you do it that way.
Okay, so, so you'd like to see us take action, so. Does this make sense? Move to accept the bid from Chester M. Kearney, the sum of twenty two thousand per. Per fiscal year.
Per year.
Uh, per year for the period of FY twenty three through FY twenty seven.
Yes, yes.
Does that do it?
Yes.
Second to motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, good job, aye.
We got through it. All right, we need these. We got, oh, oh, you gotta add chair, so.
Uh.
And for the chair.
And authorize the, and authorize the chair to sign.
Second to motion. Something.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Do you want to accept my financial report?
Aye.
If hopefully you've had a chance to review those.
No.
You wanna, Monica?
Saw a lot of red.
That's what I noticed. Well, it is what it is, it's just.
That's right.
I mean, it's not gonna change anything, but. I think we should accept it, even though some of us may not have reviewed it.
Move to accept the file. Twenty twenty three year and financials as presented.
Second to motion. Those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
What? Well. Monica, just a second. I need to be distant. I see that we have this refund on sale for the guns.
Yeah.
So, it's basically the issue is that when. We started this whole process, we had hoped or thought that the money would come back in from them sooner. They gave us a credit, but it, it never really got conveyed back to us at the commissioning office that they were holding a credit for future purchases and all that. So, we went back to them, or I went back to them in the letter and said, that was not the intent, so yes, you need to have something from us, I'm telling you right now, we need a check for that amount. But at the time, I, since then, the reporting for ARPA last year has been done and completed up to December thirty first, the end of the last year. So, the original motion you had made was to essentially, when we received the check back of the, the amount. Was to apply that back into ARPA funds to make available for other expenditures, because originally, we were never intended to pay that full amount. But they billed us the full amount, and we paid it in order to be able to get what we had.
Well, and they applied a credit.
Uh, so, we were just trying to clarify.
They didn't, they didn't apply the credit directly to the billing.
No, no, we got an invoice.
Yeah, once we return, once we return the blocks, yes, we got a credit once.
We had a credit, who told them now if you wanna check?
Yeah, which is, we do have the actual check.
There is no credit.
No.
We, we gotta check instead.
Yeah, but we had a credit for the bid until he.
Yes, until it requested, yeah.
You must have had that credit booked somewhere or no?
No, we didn't know what the amount was gonna be till they'll, till they were.
They were all turned in.
Returned and sold.
So, why can't we just let it stand as it is, because we'd have to amend the report?
Because we have to, yeah, so when we do our filings.
No, we can let it stand as it is because we've done our.
Well, yes, that's true too.
Yeah.
But the question is where do you put the money, yeah.
Is that what you mean?
Why wouldn't you just put it back in the?
Uh, so the next.
Done their ARPA. For a period, we have a credit.
Because I, I mean, I understood you reported it, yeah, I mean, that's not the actual cost then, that wasn't the actual cost. So this was the other issue, if you do that, because we talked about potentially having that be an alternative. You put it back in, the actual money, put it back into like a reserve account or something. If you put that money back into ARPA, it's gonna increase the ARPA budget, no matter how. From what we have in, in there right now, maybe not as what was reported as a sale for that particular item, but it is going to increase.
What we should do is just put it back into a reserve account.
That's what you're suggesting.
Yes.
Yeah. I agree.
But I would suggest if you're gonna do that, I think straight face test would be, it would have to tie back to what you're presumably your original intent would be.
Yes.
Yes, yeah.
So, does he have, what is the equipment reserve account?
Yes.
That would be, the account goes back into.
That's the proper place to put it.
That's where normally fire.
Was that the motion you need to take? You got that number?
Ninety two hundred, nine thousand two hundred, do you need the, the G account?
Yeah. So Paul is going to move to. Buy the ninety two hundred dollar sales blocks to the. G account number.
So, uh.
In my memo.
About this. Move to buy the ninety two hundred dollar refund. For Whitmer, Whitmer Public Safety Group Incorporated for purchase of blocks of proper. Uh. Into the proper reserve account.
To the Sheriff's Office Equipment Reserve Account. Sorry, I don't have.
That's fine, that's cool, there's, there's only one.
Okay.
All right.
Uh.
G one, three zero, one, four, zero, zero.
Say that again, three?
Uh, G one, three zero, one, four, zero, zero.
One more time, G one.
G one, three zero, one, four, zero, zero.
Okay, move to apply the ninety two hundred dollar refund from Whitmer Public Safety Group Incorporated for the purchase of the block to the Sheriff's. Office Equipment Account, G one, three zero, one, four, dash, zero, zero.
Second to motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Have we gotten a final payoff moniker on the damage on total of that cruiser yet?
I've not seen anything.
Have we got, have we got the first check?
I've not seen anything.
I, I thought they had sent.
Did we?
A fifty three something check, but we'll have to double check then. I know they have sent us correspondence, whether they sent the actual. Check to us, I guess we'd have to double check.
And where is that going when it comes? Think back into the cruiser reserve account?
I don't think I've been directed.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I don't think we've discussed what to do.
You wanna wait till you get the money, or you want a direction now?
Uh, I think it would be good to wait, see where the money is.
Because as I understand, it's gonna send you an initial amount, then at some point there's a final adjustment.
Yeah, there's supposed to be a final adjustment, and there was a little bit of a dispute over the value of equipment that couldn't be retrieved from the vehicle. And that was one of those most recent correspondence, I mean, they were, they were doing that, so. But yeah, ultimately, there was supposed to be a final amount, but they settled on, notified the county.
I made it work as much as I know.
See, Michael, I thought, I thought you had said let's keep an eye out for an insurance payment, and I don't.
Yeah, and I, I'm not, yeah, I'm not saying we have, I don't, I know that there may have been correspondence that's gone back and forth. And that's part of the trouble with them a little bit too, is sometimes stuff misses our office, makes its way down to the sheriff's office first, and that has to make its way back, but. I believe that there was some correspondence back and forth, so I'll double check.
Malcolm said the thing, we both.
They just did.
For the, for the blocks.
Yeah.
Yeah, we did.
We did, yeah.
Malcolm may have just said that they're going to recognize a certain amount as the initial, and then they were, they're gonna do a second adjustment, a final adjustment at some point. I am sorry, if I send you a check, but. We haven't got the check.
Not as far as I know, unless, unless like he said, unless it got by us and.
We'll look and, I mean, it wouldn't have got, or shouldn't have got deposited anywhere, because it would have had to have made its way up to, to the treasury, uh, such a treasurer, moniker, guarantee. But, well, I'll double check with what we've got so far, and then I'll reach out to Malcolm to.
Seems like it's an awful long time to get a settlement on that.
I'm, the only thing I'm not sure about is whether they held up because they were disputing, I mean, because we challenged, like we, the sheriff's office said. You know, we had X amount of equipment that still had value in there that we could not take out of that vehicle, and you didn't count that, and then. They, Malcolm, as I recall, asked them to send back some additional information, so that could be possible.
Just follow up on that.
Yeah. No, we'll do.
All right. There are community benefits grants, wasn't sure what we wanna really. Do today other than. Uh, I still would like, like. I'd like to recognize the rank order. And uh. Make. Some suggestions on the ratio of funding for the, for categories. And then see how difficult it would be then to assign. An amount. Descending order for. For funds. We don't have a score sheet for that, do we, uh, we should be like, it's like, overall, we should have a thing. It's the box.
So what we did. Is fire. A total amount, and we said fourteen percent economic development. Seven percent tourism, forty two. Community development. Thirty seven. And those are the numbers, right? That's the action prior to this.
Well, that's when we were setting up the criteria.
Yes, that's, that's the point, so, so.
Well.
Bill, I'm just trying to, so, so. Now, what you're saying, Bill, is we may wanna make some adjustments to that based on the score.
Yeah, I'm, yeah, I'm suggesting that the amount that we distribute should mirror the. Amount requested. So if community development, for example, represented seventy five percent of the. The amount requested, there'd be seventy five percent of a. Disbursement should, should. Should go to, uh, community development. So, real quickly, Michael or Monica, who's that? Looking for? Well. I'm looking for the total amount of requested money.
So just, we just, does somebody have this spreadsheet?
Sorry, no, I, I wasn't prepared.
Okay.
I didn't realize.
Okay, so, Bill, what you're saying is add up those that requested amount, right?
Right.
Okay.
So. Came, that came. That came in the, in Excel spreadsheet, but you're gonna add up. And we're only doing eighty thousand dollars. I know, but what I wanna do is, is get a percentage.
Okay, so.
Yes.
So.
Thirty seven percent of eighty thousand. Yeah, but that's an arbitrary amount that we set aside, it's not, thirty seven percent does not equal. This amount of.
Okay, so the total of that is two, two hundred thousand, eight hundred and seventy five dollars.
Once again, Paul.
Two hundred thousand. Eight seventy five.
Okay, so then. So twenty percent, uh, twenty thousand, then roughly ten percent, correct?
Yes.
So economic development is ten percent, I'm just suggesting this for now. Another ten percent for tourism. And.
Forty and forty.
Uh, pardon?
Forty and forty, see, I wouldn't agree with that. I, I understand where you're going, but, but I, I think that. Tourism here, we have one application and. And quite frankly. I'm having a heart, I mean, I understand why it's important, frankly.
This wasn't going to be my final suggestion, what I was gonna do was just do the raw numbers and then do, we call it the feel good, you know what I mean? And come back and do exactly as you said, okay?
Okay.
It doesn't feel good to give twenty thousand dollars for one application, so.
Yeah.
You think it's forty and forty now roughly?
Well, if you put ten and ten.
I know, but uh, are those numbers, those numbers add forty and forty?
Yes, ten and ten is twenty. And at forty is.
If twenty, forty, sixty, seventy. Eighty two thirty five. Eight, eight, eighty two thousand, three hundred and seventy five. Is what percent of twenty thousand, uh, two hundred thousand?
I see what you're saying. So.
Divide eight, eight, eighty two thousand, three hundred and seventy five by two hundred thousand, eight, eight, seventy five.
Forty, forty one.
Forty one percent.
Forty one, okay, so it's forty one and thirty nine, okay.
Forty one.
Forty one for development, thirty nine for helping the disadvantaged. And let's go back to you. And I agree with you, I think we should reduce. Right now tourism would be. Two thousand dollars. If we have eighty thousand dollars, right? I mean, eight, eight thousand dollars if we had. We're, we're going to disperse. I mean, eight, eight thousand dollars if we had, we're, we're gonna disperse eighty thousand dollars, right, right, John?
Yeah.
Okay, we got eighty thousand dollars to disperse, and if we give ten percent to economic development, that's eight thousand dollars. Do what?
Uh, I'm not quite following you.
Well, uh, right now, we've decided that it, from just the raw data, the rate, the request, ten percent of the request came for economic development.
Or actually, here, fourteen percent, right?
Do what? No, no, we, we've modified that to ten now, we got ten, ten, forty-one, and thirty-nine, it's a new, a new percentage numbers based upon submissions.
Ten, forty-one, and thirty-nine.
That's what, that's what it computes, right? Now we're doing the feel-good. Economic development right now, ten percent is a ten percent figure, ten percent of eighty thousand dollars is eight thousand dollars. So of the eighty thousand, you wanna give eight thousand to economic development?
Yes.
Okay, so let's just go with that for the time being. Tourism is, is ten percent, you wanna give eight thousand dollars to tourism?
No.
What do you want to reduce that to?
Zero.
We, we have a, we have a category.
We have a category of one applicant, and, and, you know, I, I think it's a good thing, but I'm just, I question whether the county should be, you know, funding one project, one community.
Well.
That, that's my only.
Yep.
And I'm not.
Yeah, now you're looking at the applicant instead of the, uh, well.
Exactly, that's my problem.
I'm going to suggest that we reduce that to two thousand dollars.
Okay.
That we can look at that later and see if we even wanna give that up based upon the total score.
Okay, I see what you're doing.
Yep. Now forty-one percent of, uh, of, uh, community development would be around thirty-two thousand. Does that sound right?
Be about, what you said, thirty-three thousand.
Oh, I, I didn't, I just did quick data ahead, but thirty-three thousand?
Yeah, thirty-three, six hundred.
No, no, that's forty-two percent.
So. Okay, point four-one times eighty thousand, right?
Right. Thirty-two eight.
Thirty-two eight.
So if we reduce that to thirty-two thousand, round numbers, you're okay with that?
Sure.
John?
Yeah. I'm following, I'm sorry, John.
Well, I.
I just mean to answer your question.
You know what we're doing?
I know what we're doing.
In what?
I, I think I know. I'm not understanding, we're, I know.
Okay, let's, let's just finish my, in this event, we'll see what else we want to do. So, what do we got now? We got thirty-two, forty-two, so we got thirty-eight thousand left.
We got forty thousand, because we called it thirty thousand.
Oh, well, we're thirty, so we call it thirty, so we have forty thousand, help the disadvantaged, forty thousand?
Yes.
Okay, okay, that's, that's one way to decide how we're gonna disperse the money, John, what, you got a better way, you got a different way? And while you're thinking, John, I'll tell you, another way is we simply don't put any percentage to any category. Then we go right to the total score with the idea that we have eighty thousand dollars. And we look at the top score. We look down through the top scores. And we decide an amount of money of top scores until we exhaust all the money. So we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, we have thirteen requests.
Of course, we're not allocated to.
Nope, and if we, if we gave, right, if we dispersed the, if we dispersed the, uh, eighty thousand of the six of the top contenders. So what amounts they got? That's another way to do it, I'm just throwing out options.
Or, or I like your option, we just have to argue over whether the number is four, six, or eight, or whatever.
In other words, we, we, we don't, we don't.
Yeah.
No percentage for categories. Might help us understand what they want, what their services provide, but no, we simply take everybody in totality and take our scores, stat at the top. So.
Quite frankly, I like that idea, and then the argument is over, not the argument, the decisions, is, is how many, how many do we fund? And then once we arrive at that decision, then we, we decide how much to each one.
So if that be the case, to the right col, there's, there's no column, it's the right of paper, behind the line for the applicant, we're going to put the ranking, you know, which first place, second place, so on. So, next step.
Tied for first.
Okay, so we're gonna give next step first, and, uh, home co-op two. And then what, seventy-four is the next one? All right, then, uh, special children's friends is three, and loaves and fishes is four, is that correct?
Uh, well, I mean, you've got ties, but yeah.
Oh, wait a minute, we got, no, yeah, that we.
So, yeah, next step, and, next step in home, a tie for first, then you got, uh, loaves and fishes. Oh, yeah. Yeah, loaves and fishes, that would be tied three and four. Third.
Loaves and fishes and special.
Yeah, yeah, and special children's was tied for third.
Then seventy-four, what's the next one, seventy-three?
Seventy-three, that's the Downey's Community Partners.
That's gonna be fifth. Seventy-three, now we got.
Skills USA.
Skills USA is six, and H, H C P C, and, uh, and got soil and water. Seven, that's it. Sixty-eight. Where's the other sixty-eight?
Well, you got it empty, okay.
Where's the other sixty-eight? Oh. So just say sixty-six is eight, sixty-six is number eight. Okay, so there's eight, that's eight out of thirteen, you're saying that we probably won't find beyond that?
I can't imagine.
Okay. So, as it stands right there, if we gave everybody ten grand, that's, that's the, that's what you thought came out ahead.
Yeah, it's one more if and so on, right?
Oh, good point. So. Only one. Children's, special children's friends, but when you look at these.
Well, so what I would do there is I would put the eight there. And then I would apply the rest. Kind of alter the rest.
Well, quite honestly, I'd like to do something like, the first two get twelve. First on second. At eight.
We'll have a.
Excuse me, third and fourth get nine. Fifth gets something, something, you know what I'm saying? So that we give, we, we recognize the the, um, scoring. Although it is helpful a difference between seventy-six and seventy-one, but, uh, that's, that's another way to apply the funds.
What was the total amount, was it eight, eighty?
I, I don't even know.
Yeah, so you had forty that you put in the budget, and you had forty you were gonna take out the same, yeah.
So do you wanna give everybody the same, or do you want proportionate to their ranking?
I think in some cases, we should look at whether we funded, if we funded them in the past, what was the funding limit? Funded them for.
We have documents for you on that, but we, Michael.
Yeah, I thought we, I was getting something that I emailed to you.
I thought it just had their names on it, to pad the down. Oh. Yeah, it did not have the.
It didn't have the dollar.
That's easy enough. So. Like, for me, like, number two here, they asked for eight thousand, eight thousand dollars. So I think that one should be eight thousand. Does that make sense?
Yeah, why would you wanna give them more than that?
Exactly.
Yes. So that makes, that's easy, I guess.
So.
So that leaves us.
Seventy-two thousand.
Seventy-two thousand. Monica, what you do that math for us is we're gonna keep, take the eighty thousand and reduce it by eight thousand. Now what do you wanna do, Paul?
I'm sorry, but who is number one?
Uh, no, we, 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 I, we just, just do the raw numbers, we'll, we'll keep track here.
Okay.
But, uh, so you're down to seventy-two thousand balance, right?
Yes, yes.
Okay, and I think the top two.
Yep. Top two what? Get one to.
I don't care, yeah. Ten thousand.
Ten? So you're gonna reduce that by another twenty thousand, Monica?
Okay.
And now fifty-two thousand?
Yes.
We have one, two, three, five, eleven.
Got, uh, got a tie for, well, we got the last one, because we already determined the.
Yeah.
Especially that's loaves and fishes. And loaves and fishes, I would say ten.
There's another ten, so we're down forty-two.
Yes.
Forty-two, one, two, three.
Five, which is, uh, Downey's Community Partners.
And if we make that forty-two.
Yes.
Well, we, we distribute that out equally, that's ten thousand five hundred.
Well, that's why I think we're gonna have to, I, I'm just throwing numbers out.
I think, uh, I think, uh, next step, home co-op and loaves and fishes should be.
Twelve thousand.
Twelve thousand.
Yeah.
Monica, take another six thousand off your total.
Twelve thousand?
No.
A total of twelve?
No, take another six thousand from what you already had.
No, but here's the problem, next step should be ten-five.
Yeah, that's what they're asking for. Oh.
Okay, and then.
Wait a minute, Monica, Monica's.
I was lost at forty-two thousand.
Now, we've already screwed that whole thing.
I, I got it here, though. I, I got it, so twelve.
We're at forty-two five, right?
Yes.
So, take forty-two five from eighty thousand, Monica.
Thirty-seven five.
Thirty-seven five?
Yep.
We still only have three left.
No, we have four left.
Oh, four left.
That would be ninety-three seventy-five each.
And I say that we give next step, ten.
Yeah.
Okay?
Say a short five hundred.
Yep, we give next step ten. So if we take ten off of that, now we got three left, we have twenty-seven five.
Now you're, you're increased. You have to.
What are you down to now, twenty-seven five?
Yes.
Divided by three is what?
Nine, one, six, six.
Oh, but the, the number should have gone up, because we were giving next step five hundred. Yeah, we're giving. We're giving them ten thousand five hundred to match their request, to match their request, so you.
I had ten thousand.
Yeah, the number should have gone.
Oh, wait a minute.
The other way.
I put that wrong.
Okay, so right now at ten thousand five hundred, okay?
We have four left.
We, we're at forty-two thousand five hundred.
Okay, so we got four left, and it's Downey's Community Partners that I want to give. When we got forty-two five, four left.
We've got forty-two five.
So that's like ninety-five hundred piece, something.
Ten, six, twenty-five, ten, six, twenty-five.
Uh, no, so eighty, we have right now eighty thousand dollars minus forty-two five hundred. We have thirty-seven thousand five hundred dollars left. Okay? If you divide that by four, you get ninety-three seventy-five. Okay?
So I wanna give Downey's Partners ten.
Okay, so ten, now there's, now there's twenty-seven five left among three.
Which is, we give, you'll give, uh.
So that's ninety-one sixty-seven each.
So we give ninety-five to skills, just to keep round numbers.
Ninety-five to skills?
Leaving a balance of what?
So, hold on, twenty-seven five hundred minus ninety-five hundred. We have eighteen thousand dollars left.
We give nine thousand to the other two.
You're getting all this, Paul?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, you gonna send it to us?
Yes.
Yeah, so, so I'm gonna double check the math.
Well, let's, let's do it in order, so number one, next step is gonna get ten-five, correct? So you.
Well, let's go in, let's go in order of the sheet.
Okay. These, the skills USA is gonna get ninety-five?
Yes.
Okay. Then H C P C and soil and water are both gonna get nine?
Yes.
Special children's fund's gonna be at eight?
Yes.
Downey's Community is gonna get ten?
Yes.
Next step, we get ten-five?
Yes.
Loaves and fish, not a home co-op, and loaves and fishes, each get twelve?
Yes.
Tip that.
Equals eighty thousand.
There you go.
Okay, so. Don't wanna get too much, but.
John, I, I don't feel good.
All right, so we have, I have a drastic difference of opinion on these. Those folks. Can, can we print the new ones, please?
I don't know, it's, uh, in there.
Yeah, I can't print down here anyway, so I'll have to run.
Do you have it on your?
Yeah, I have it on my computer.
Oh, but you can't print it.
You emailed it to me, but I still.
Are everybody writing on this? I was just looking for a clean copy of this, that's all right, that's all right, go for it.
All right, well, I mean, I can run up and do it while you're talking.
Okay, so, uh, we've been going up in the flying figures, just we don't need it.
I do question the skills USA one, as like your number one, one of your number one rated things. When I read over that business, since to my opinion what it is, I don't really find it to be, first of all, have much at all to do with Hancock County, and I did not get a good five from it, I don't know. To me, this is a national, like, business, and there's a chapter in the state of Maine. And all they do is put on a conference that brings in, like, the, they have the high school kids and, uh, uh, go to this conference, it's a conference is what they do, put on, and they charge all these, I don't know if it's the people, the schools, that's where all their money comes from. I just found it really, like, it's essentially like a, a, a one-day event, or whatever, I mean, like, I don't.
I thought somehow they were, were, were connecting kids to the, uh, the basic skills training.
Yeah, but it's, they're only doing this convention. Well, that's their per, that's their purpose, but what they're doing to accomplish that is. Is a convention. It's like a two-day convention, and I don't want to derail the whole thing, I mean, I think if you really, like, look at all the materials, and you do a little bit of research on it, like, to me, it's really far from everyone that, like, if you guys said, hey, we want to give ten thousand dollars to every high school, uh, work, workshop to get table saws, I'd be like, okay, that's like, to me, or you know what I mean, like, something closer to that, where we're like, or we want to do a, uh, scholarship for, uh, get plumbers, and that, that'd be like, you know what, I think that's a great use of the money. To me, this is like, it's, it's an event planner, it's an event coordinator, and the money they're asking for is to house their, their, uh, trailer or cargo, whatever thing, to hold all their, store all their stuff for the convention. I mean, it's not like.
Well.
Well, and here's the, here's the other argument to support, John, is that's the one where there was the most disparity in scores. Well, yeah, because it was like my least favorite, obviously.
And I got to tell you, shame on these people in high school, because I've never heard of it before. I tried to do some research, and all I got was the propaganda that they promoted, so.
Yeah, and when you, when you try and Google it and find an information, it is a lot of great information.
Well, you'll find an objective evaluation of that program. All I could find was their own profit, their own, uh, progress, their own, I don't call it propaganda, but their own promotion.
So, here's, here's, I, I, I'm with you, because I had a really hard time with the scoring matrix on that. You know, trying big names out of it, and I'm researching, so I am for, this is a radical step, taking them out and putting that into the top three. Excuse me, into the, into the, uh, into the number one. Home and loaves and fishes, here's why. Next, it really should apply to one, to next step two, I comment, but they're asking for ten-five, and we're, we're funding that. But I think that amount should be redistributed, and, and here's, here's another reason, is that's the greatest disparity in scores. And to be honest, I had a hard time with my score, but I was trying to do it objectively.
Well.
That's just a proposal. I know with somebody else.
And I'm thinking, if, if the information we get leaves us perplexed about an applicant.
That's something.
I think that hurts their abilities, that they, uh, to, to get the award, so. I mean, I'm not. You're saying shame on me for not understanding this, but on the same token, I've got an applicant that I, I, I don't understand. Is that my fault, or is it their fault? So. I, you know.
Well, that's why we're having this discussion.
Right, and I'm willing to say that if John, he's, John's community, he goes more about, understands it better than I do, and I'm willing to accept John's analysis of this applicant, and it's that there's more worthy choices that we know, or what we know, or. I'm, I'm, you know, I'm disappointed that we're not giving a lot more to somebody. I mean, the Downey's Community Partners is that, that's that used to be, uh.
It's the cap agency.
Yeah, the cap, cap agency. That's someone on the, on the bus for.
Correct. So, I think what I like mentioned in all, uh, openness, that, you know, like, I'm on the board at Downey's Community Partners, I'm awesome. My spouse, uh, works part-time seasonally now at home co-op, so I just want, don't want anybody to be like, oh, well, John.
This has nothing to do with you.
I know, but I just don't.
Well, we did this.
Yeah, of course, you know, it's, you know.
I would like to give, I would like to give, I would like to give, uh, home co-op and loaves and fishes sixteen each. And give another fifteen hundred to Downey's Partners.
Six, uh, so that, that's an.
About three thousand each. In other words, they're, they're going to get fifteen, that's six of the nine, whatever. They're going to get, uh, four thousand, they're going to get sixteen thousand each, that's, that's eight thousand, leaving ninety-five hundred that we give to Downey's Community Partners.
This is a grand kind of thing. Okay. Okay, and what's that Downey's Community Partners would get, what?
They would both get sixteen. Downey's Community?
Yeah.
No, 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 they'd get, uh.
Eleven-five.
They'd get eleven-five, right. You okay with that, Paul?
Yeah, so, let me read them. Uh, HCPC, nine. Right. HCPC, nine. Hancock Soil and Water, nine. Special Children's Fund, eight. Downey's Community Partners, eleven-five. Next step, ten-five. Loaves and fishes, and, um, sixteen. Each.
Eight each. They add up eighty, Monica?
I don't know.
I'm going to do it too, Monica, so that'll be.
I'm pretty sure it does.
Yes, it does.
Eighty thousand. And quite frankly, that lines up with the scoring, if you were to take, sort of, take a rough ad. Yeah.
You okay with that?
Yep.
So, Paul, put that in the motion.
I wish I had a clean sheet. Okay, so I'm going to move to award the following, what's the name of this fund?
Community Benefit.
Uh.
Make the following awards from the community. Make the public awards to community benefit grant program as follows.
I'm going to move to make the following, award the following amounts from the community benefit grant program. HCPC, nine thousand dollars. Hancock County Soil and Water, nine thousand dollars. Special Children's Friends, eight thousand dollars. Downey's Community Partners, eleven thousand five hundred. Next step, ten thousand five hundred. Home co-op, sixteen thousand. Loaves and fishes food pantry, sixteen thousand.
Second motion. In favor?
Aye.
All right.
I'm going to move to go on an executive session as permitted by MRSA Title One, Section four oh five, six A, for exempt employee evaluation, EMA Director, EMA Director's name.
Second motion. In favor?
Aye.
All right.